...out with our roll call, please.
Mr. La Mesa.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Ms. Franchco.
Absolutely. Okay, Commissioner?
Yeah.
I'd like to bring up Bishop Herron first. He has the fruits of the ARPA money coming together and he, they have an event coming up he'd like to talk about real quick for the community.
Absolutely.
And two more here, everyone. First of all, again, thank the commissioners and all of those who were involved in helping the partnership of Tremo County Health District, which Migliozzi also has been very helpful and supportive. As you all do know that our health is a critical concern as it relates to what happens in our medical fields, what happens in our families, and we have partnership with them along with several other organizations, health organizations, to make sure that we provide the best healthcare opportunities especially for those who are not insured and those who are still having problems in identifying the significance of how important preventative healthcare is important. So actually, as the fruits that we're beginning to yield already is that partnership that will continue to grow and this coming, actually Thursday, April 25th, we're having a Health Wellness Fair. I want to pass it off to all of you, you can take a look at it, and we, I don't want to take this one more time, but just say, um, the partnership information, Health Wellness Fair, and all of our partners that will be a part of this. So I'll, I'll walk around and give it to you all. Thank you both.
I got one.
This will be, uh, uh, thank you, Bishop. This will be among many, many health initiatives that we will be working with. Tremo County Health District Department will be having Health Help in our, we will be getting out of this conflict. The love of industry, we built it, uh, some years ago, and we felt like the problem that we had in our community on, actually, in the southwest side of Warren. A lot of the needed entities in terms of helping to restore.
Bishop, correct.
A lot of the health need entities that needed to be restored or even presented were not present. We took the time to build and construct a probably one point, 1.5 million dollar facility in an area where typically nobody would want to come because it seemed like that area was spied, it was close, way too metropolitan housing, and we did not look at that problem as a problem that could not be solved. And the thing of our venture to work and to improve the area was taking the solution to the problem, taking it to the problem. As we do know that where there's crime and where there's no for health presentation to people, then there's going to be a number of contributing problems that really plight our city in a very negative way. So this is an ongoing. It is a 25, uh, 96 Highland Avenue, as you walk, go down Holly, going out into Township area. It is on the right-hand side. Tremo County Hospital Conference will be opening up and they'll be servicing the area three to four days a week. So, uh, this is the, do you want, do you want it?
You're sharing.
Oh, you're sharing. Do you want it? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Uh, any questions?
I, I just want to say, uh, thank you to Bishop Herron and his, and all the work he's done partnering with Frank Migliozzi because, uh, in talking to, to Commissioner Migliozzi, biggest challenge to public health is, uh, you know, disparities in public health when it comes to racial equality and racial inclusion. So I think this is part of the, part of the way that we help to bridge that gap by getting to the community as opposed to having them come to us, we're getting to them, and, uh, this is a step in that direction, and I just want to say thank you. It was the most unique, uh, ask I think that we had of all of our, our past, but I think it's one of the most important, so just want to say thank you and continuing success.
This is something too, any resident can go to this, they don't have to be in War Township, they don't have to be, um, a member of the church or anything, any citizen wants to go and get a free health screening. This Thursday, 12 to 4, come and support the cause, come and support you, come and support the Health Department's initiative, and, um, you know, if you've got a free chance on Thursday, um, I encourage you to show up to it.
Love to have you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Bishop.
Have a blessed day.
Anybody else have anything of urgent need where they have to get to another meeting or anything that would like to go before we get to that point?
Ch- I know Champion's here, did you want to wait, Champion, or did you want to?
Actually, I don't have anything per se.
Okay.
I just like to, you know, thank the commissioners, you know, for the ambulance that was provided, you know, Champion Township. I just recently moved to service, I've already run some calls out of it, so thank you again.
We, we don't get that a lot, thank you so much for coming here and personally thanking, so.
We have spaces here that.
We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate your time. I recently submitted an application for these ARPA funds to purchase an ambulance for Howland Township. Uh, we are the busiest fire-based EMS system in Tremo County, about 75% of our volume rerun, just a little over 4,000 calls a year. So, but we're also looking to put some of our own money towards that purchase, or we're asking for the use of ARPA funds to make the ambulance purchase, but we have also budgeted about $40,000 to help pay for the load system and also to strike the ambulance. So that, that's our, that's our ask, we really appreciate your consideration. Unfortunately, with inflation of fire trucks, unfortunately, you know, back in the day, a fire truck used to cost between 400,000 and 500,000 dollars for an engine, now an engine costs about a million dollars, and that's what a ladder truck used to cost, ambulances used to be a lot more affordable, um, but with rising overtime costs that we're seeing shortfall in our field as well, that's also hitting, hitting our budget hard. Sure you all know, and I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to apply for this funding, and I, I hope you'll consider it, but we're also looking to kind of partner with you and we're not afraid to put some of our own money towards that purchase as well.
Thank you. And, and this is, this is Howland Township's only ask, I believe?
Yeah.
No, there's just, there's, there's a, there's a smaller one from Ballendale.
For the food pantry.
For the food pantry.
Okay.
Um, and that was, I had that on my list, that I had received the request and I, I have it on the commissioner's drive, and, um, you guys can decide where you want it to go, which, which she wanted on the yes or the maybe.
Well, with this here, I guess we can answer now because we have set the precedence with this. I, I would like to move that to a yes, for my thing.
Sure.
And then put it in line with the yeses, and while we're on that same note, um.
So at the end, on, at the end of the queue then?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, okay.
And I believe we did the same thing last week with the, the Eagle joint fire district.
It is, it is on the sheet that I'm going to give you today and set the end.
Yep, so this will be right behind that.
Okay.
Two more fire trucks there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Mary, do you want to go now or do you want to wait until we get to the ARPA part of the meeting?
I can wait for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, without further ado, we'll start with our regular agenda items to discuss. Uh, dispense the minutes, approve the bills, transfer monies, and Martha, thank you so much for, um, the budgetary explanations you have here. I know that's a lot of work for you to do and duplicate and then go over it again with us, but, uh, gives us something to look at and speed things up a little bit.
Okay, I'll, I'll do it as fast as I can and if there's any questions. Um, and also unfortunately Bob isn't here because he usually does the sanitary engineers, but I'll go through it with his explanation. Um, the 575 is, um, an RIF transfer for almond tax plant. The 1060, 10,666 is the June 24th bond instrument, or interest payment. Highway is also a bond interest payment, and the planning commission is administration reimbursement to close out the, the grant year. I'll move on to the additional appropriations. Our offices is for Microsoft 365, and if you look, um, on the, um, the budget commission, agenda item that corresponds with that, um, that's, uh, we're, as you know, we're converting to a Microsoft 365, and that's actually the 24, 25 invoice for all the ones that we have converted. The Board, Board of Developmental Disabilities is a, um, it's adding fiscal year 24, Keeping Families Together Grant, the planning commission, um, and by the way, that, okay, that has a revenue side on the budget commission meeting. The planning commission is a local share received, domestic relations, juvenile court is amendment to, um, to, number two, to the reclaim, reclaim Ohioian services grant, treasurer's office is to cover bank fees, which will surpass the approved budget amount, the sheriff's office is $300 for canine safety equipment. Moving on to transfer of appropriations, um, the sanitary engineers, the first one is for the almond, almond tax plant, um, the second one is an increase in small tools, the third one is for their Microsoft 365 licenses, uh, the next one is future pump purchase, 911 is, um, an increase in office supplies, uh, the board of elections is the Adobe software license, the coroner's office is their Microsoft Office 365, the domestic relations is their Mi- Microsoft Office 365, common fees is just a description, uh, planning commission is to close out a grant year, our, our office is our Microsoft 365 licenses, and, um, the, also an increase in office supplies. The, um, budget commission, um, amendment are the park district, um, the commissioner's office is that stone building project, the second one is the donation for the dog kennel, we're just moving things around and increasing the appropriation. The sanitary engineer is an increase in the revenue budget, the second one for the sanitary engineer is, um, debt now paid from 304, remember, we're kind of moving stuff around and paying things out of different funds and trying to organize that better. The decrease in appropriation is, um, to max, it's, it's the fix, it's a fixed to match the amount that was actually approved in the general fund. Um, the, uh, the other two for the auditor's office are, um, the debt now paid from 304, it matches the sanitary engineers, um, so we're just kind of increasing one, decreasing the other. Um, the, uh, Microsoft is the, um, Microsoft 365, 24, 25 invoice.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
Number seven we'll move on to then. Concur with the Tremo County Engineer and acknowledge the placement of no engine brake signage on Bellwick Road between State Route 304 and Mount Everett Road in Hubbard Township pursuant to ORC 505.17A. The Hubbard Township Board of Trustees have enacted legislation permitting the use of engine brakes on vehicles within this unincorporated area of the township. Number eight. Concur with Tremo County Engineer to grant a special hauling permit to haul steel quarters on Tremo County roadways, Jero Transportation P-I-N-I. Concur with Tremo County Engineer to grant special annual fleet permits, transport, transport aggregate concrete construction goods, Tremo County Logging, Dawn Green Trucking, Jager Concrete. Concur with Tremo County Engineer to grant a special hauling permit to move overweight equipment over Tremo County roadways, richest towing and service. And concur with Tremo County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permit requested by the properties listed, Leon Yoder, Aurora Construction, Mass Tech Communications Group. Gary's here. Question I got for you, Gary.
Yeah.
We, we do these things every week. I looked at other counties that I've seen so far, Mahoney County and Ashtric Gula, when they have their county commissioners meetings, they don't ever have any of these permit things on their agendas in other counties, and we don't journalize these things here, I imagine the permits are kept on file in your office. So why do we do them here?
Good question. The protocol forever, I mean, the, the commissioners' rows, and just as an acknowledgement of the issuance of those permits, and also so that the press knows that these permits are being issued, whether it's a heavy haul or road closure, it would go through the commissioners.
But you don't see any legality wise why we have to do it here or?
At least by the prosecutors' office as well, I'm thinking, if it needs to continue that way, um, that'd be up to the commissioners. We have no problem, since we're doing them anyway, it's pretty routine, we do have the process, the, the agenda items, so there's a little bit of work that goes.
Right, it's a little work for everybody is what I'm thinking, and we, we're, we're trying to streamline what we do by looking at other counties and standardize, not standardize between counties, because everyone does things a little different, but at least see where, why our agendas are so much longer than the other four counties around us that touch us, and they are. And when we look, we don't see any of the engineer stuff on their agendas, and we're thinking maybe that's one area there. Another, well, there's a couple other areas we're looking at too, things we really have to do this on agenda, this has to be something that creates work for you to duplicate, you already do the permit, you already filed the permit, then you have to, now with the portal, put it in here, we've got to type it up and, and do it again, um, so I just wanted to hear your opinion if there was a reason.
Okay, so if it's a permit, we finally want to continue doing it, whether it's a closure, you know.
Yeah, road closure, instead of a right-of-way permit.
Like a heavy haul or annual fleet, um, you know, I think a joint, uh, opinion, you know, joint question, opinion, prosecutor's.
Sure. Tom, Bud. Okay, we'll look into that, and I, I, we've already ran it by Dan's, and he said he was going to look into it.
Okay.
Um, when I, we started this process, but thank you. Okay. We are up to number 12. Pursuant to section 551301 of the Ohio Revised Code, to authorize Tremo County Engineer to purchase sodium chloride rock salt through the Ohio Department of Transportation for 2024-25, winter fill and execute the participation agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Transportation Office of Contracts, purchasing services authorization, participation in Tremo County in the contract, purchase sodium chloride, and agreeing to be bound by the invitation terms and conditions. Now again, is this something you need our permission to do?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, number 13. Do you mind the journal action dated May 3rd, 2017, duly recorded in JV 146, page 20730, 20731, considering the monthly capital charge for the sanitary pump station for the property owners benefited by phase 2, 3, and 4 of the pump station portion of Little Squaw Creek Interceptor Phase 2 Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project. The monthly capital charge will now include property owners benefited by Little Squaw Creek Interceptor Phase 5, project number 19SO2E, and the Swift Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, number 2S14. Amendment is necessary to decrease the monthly charge to benefited property owners. The inclusion of more property owners to share in the debt of the pump station will reduce the monthly capital charge from 384 a month to 255 a month. So we're actually lowering the bill for the people in those neighborhoods.
Yes, Commissioner.
And not a huge jump, but it's saving on a buck and a half a month.
Uh, yeah, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. Commissioner, when that pump station first went online, uh, back in, uh, let me see, what was that, two, I've got it in the notes. Back in 2013, we had 67 connections to it, and our debt payment on that annually is $6,030 and 1 cent, and then after we brought on phases, uh, 3 and 4, we decreased it because that increased it to 131 connections, and now that we've got two other projects built that are to return to that pump station, we have 197 people sharing in that debt. So it's gone from 750 all the way down to 255 here over the years.
That's newsworthy of note because people are complaining about some of their sewer bills going up in other areas slightly, uh, from, from past years, and show that we've decreased five bucks just in that program. Um, good work, Gary.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner, any more on that? No, I'm good. Number 14. Execute letters of support for the Western Reserve Port Authority for their applications to the All Ohio Future Fund Site Development Program. The WRPA will be submitting three separate grant apps for Tremo County is listed and authorized Denny Malloy President of the Board to execute said letters on behalf of the Board, the BDM well-closing and capping on the Kimberly Clark property, the BDM truck access road on the Kimberly Clark property, and Yountstown airport site readiness. So those are letters they want of support, of course, support that.
Absolutely.
Uh, number 15. Receive and place on file the December 2023 and January 2024 monthly financial reports for Tremo County Tourism Bureau. Beth, do you have anything to say on tourism?
We're working, we're hosting Ohio Chamber, um, the Travel Industry Committee this week, we're preparing to launch our new website, which will probably be in front of the commissioners in two weeks, first week in May, if everything works to pay, and we're just going to be launching our new website, and we'll make that announcement then. And, um, I think I already told you, we had an estimated 55,000 visitors outside of a 50-mile radius here for the Silver. Estimated economic impact won't be for another couple months.
We had the joint port authority meeting on Friday with Mahoney County Commissioners. They did hire a new director of, of their Convention and Visitors Bureau. She was one of the assistants before, so you probably know her, but I did offer when we had the meeting, as we talked about, things coming up in the valley with new businesses and airport expansion things they're doing, um, that I was going to have you reach out to her, and I asked the commissioners there publicly, um, to work with us on combining some of your efforts with hers to communicate better, build bridges better, so that we're not competing against Mahoney County, we're competing with them with some of the bigger events, like their wrestling tournaments and things like that, and we, we've realized just through that, that our hotels fill up when they have big events at the Cavalli Center.
Yep.
So by having communication of their schedules and dates, letting you know when things are coming up, it'll help both of our areas benefit better by maximizing the efforts of, uh, our tourism agencies for the same events, regardless of county line. So if you can reach out there and congratulate her and, uh, they know you're going to be calling.
Thank you.
16. Enter into contract with Dawn Incorporated for the new restroom building upgrade project located at Veterans Service Center located at 253 East Market Street in the amount of 52,710.
Bill, I, I saw this on the agenda yesterday, and it didn't have the asterix on it with the, the scope of work for the project.
That's.
Can you talk a little bit of, I know that's for Coats, obviously.
Coats Cart, yeah.
Because Coats would be the lowest.
Yeah, Coats Construction did not submit any work, scope of work whatsoever, they just gave us a procurement policy.
They just gave you.
A drug and alcohol policy and a number.
Nothing.
So they didn't provide any whatsoever, did you get it in your, you should have gotten it in your email.
I didn't, I didn't see it, I didn't see it.
So, um, this is Coats Cart.
I, I was just saying because they're the lowest, that's why I didn't know.
That's all they submitted.
And that is something, you know, they are the lowest, but if they didn't follow the guidelines, it's threatening, and we have, um, one of our trade brothers there wanting to speak on that.
Uh, United Brotherhood of Carpenters, um, I was, I was just, I saw this as well, and I was just questioning, um, what this scope of work included, and, um, as to, did you reach out to Coats, asking any questions about, um, about their bid? And then, uh, yeah, I'm just asking the commissioners, looking at this a little bit.
Herm Burr, the director of the Veterans did this, so, and he gave me all the information, they all took the same tour, they all were told the same things, and here's all the information from the other two companies, but when they submitted that, what we got from these two, and that's all we got back from Coats.
Yeah, that's pretty simple and basic.
Yeah, I, I.
I, I did talk to.
Now, whether or not, I, I don't get me wrong, I don't know, I didn't talk to these individuals, Herm did, Herm Burr, so, um.
Herm, are you on the phone by chance?
Herm is on vacation.
No.
I've seen him on vacation.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yes.
It's a long conversation.
But, uh.
Yes, my documentation is here if you want to view it, public information.
I would feel free, whatever we have here, share with them so they can see, we want to be transparent across the board on why the decisions are made.
And I'd, and I'd like to get with Herm before we move on this, Commissioner, if that's okay, just to get his.
I would do it.
Take on it.
Because that did strike me too, when I saw the bid was, you know, if, if they're going to go with a bid that's not the lowest, we need a better explanation than a little asterix in that kind of thing, and I think that's fair to everybody to see the reason.
I spoke with the estimator this morning, he did send me what he sent to, to Herm, and, uh, yeah, he's a wounded combat veteran, so this is, uh, very near and dear to his worth, this project, and they were the load bidder, and also, you know, he put in the, the, uh, the bid, if you require any additional information, you can reach out to me and get us contacted, so.
Now, I don't know, when we do the bid, how mu- how often do we reach out and say, hey, give us more?
Normally no.
I don't think we normally, that's normal practice.
But just to do so. And they did send it in.
Well.
They might have sent it in, and Herm might have not gotten it, or?
Well, I got everything that Herm received in an email, so Herm sent me everything in his emails to me, so that's why I have all I have for Sogo, Dawn, and, you know, what's constructed.
Well, we'll, we'll get with Herm, we'll, we'll, the commissioners will do their due diligence, get with Herm and then ask him, and in the meantime, we can hold off on it.
I even.
Commissioner, would you like to have her remove this from the agenda for a while then?
Yes, I think so, I think so.
I'd appreciate that also.
I even went back to Herm and questioned, you know, this is all they gave him, and that's all they gave him, so.
No, that's, that, I, I know you're.
Oh, that's fine.
No, Bill, I know you're doing, we just want to get to.
And now, had this been Mike Solinsky or him working on it, the reason I want to give a pass on this for deeper is Herm doesn't do this every day.
No, nothing.
He says it's Veteran Services head, he's not, he doesn't do construction type stuff every day with this, so we just want to make sure nothing was missed. If all protocol was followed, we're going to follow protocol, which is what we have to do, but, um, let's talk to Herm first to find out the deficiencies, and if he did reach out, if he did not, if there was any communication with the other ones reaching out, and make sure that it was clearly thought out in this instance.
I think that's best, yep, I agree.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Number 17. Enter into contract with Baker, Bedner, Snyder, and Associates for the new coroner morgue office located at 176 Chestnut, engineering costs in the amount of 49,500. Bill?
Commissioners, this is to get the morgue out of the hospital in the poor conditions, you've seen the video from last week's, um, so we just want to move forward to get this office and morgues started, so we don't know what's going on with the hospital, as you know, um, just to get them out of where they're at and the poor conditions that they're in.
Well, I, and I think it makes sense, um, when we move them to the old healthcare building, I mean, there's plenty of space there, um, we've already configured kind of where it's going to go, um, it'll, it'll save time and be more efficient, uh, the, the coroner is completely on board with it, as is his staff, uh, when I.
When they put you on a ramp outside rather than the steps, how are they going to do that if you're going down in the basement?
No, it's.
They're not, it won't be in the basement.
It's going on the first.
It'll be on the first floor.
Oh, really?
The basement. And their offices will be on the second floor.
The basement is not high enough for the ceiling height, for the steel.
Okay, well, even on the first floor, then you're going up steps to get in the first floor.
You're going up, you're going up a five-foot scissor lift, per se, in a closed area, so when they do bring a.
Customer.
Customer, they would put them on this and go up and go right into the cooler part of the building.
Customer.
And then move them over to the other side when that time comes.
Are they going to be doing that through the front door where traffic is?
Back door, all the back, all the back, all through the back.
All the back doors, which works out even better because.
All behind the.
Yeah, we, we just, we discussed that.
What about security of that building?
They will.
In Oxford, we had someone there 24/7, we're going to be leaving customers there, and I know there's weird things happen in this world, are we adequate with security on that building?
There will be cameras and all that stuff, as, as well as, as, um, alarm systems. Health Department had their alarm systems on that building, so, uh, motion detectors, door alarms, whatevers.
I think in the end, I mean, it's, it's a, obviously we're.
Cost savings.
It's a cost savings, we're putting money into it, but it's going to save us in the long run because we're paying the hospital to do it anyway, so.
I guess the, I think the doc says it's like, um, 50 a year, we'll say 50,000 a year with the rent cost, and then we don't know what happens, what's going to happen with the hospital, they raise the rent, whoever buys it or whoever takes over.
Right.
That's another consideration.
So we're looking at 50 grand right now just for the engineering?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Not the price of.
Not yet.
Equipment, materials, labor, anything like that?
But it, but again, long-term investment, you know, you, you put money into it now to save over a longer period of time because you're not paying rent anymore, and we have the space.
Yes, free space.
All right. Eighteen, and we're the lowest responsive and responsible bid to CLR Utilities for the Trumbull County Fairgrounds Light Pole Project in the amount of forty thousand eight twenty. They were low bid below Bechtel and VEC. Bill?
Yes, this is the light pole project that we, uh, we worked on for the last two weeks, three weeks, I should say. I got two other quotes, Bechtel and VEC, uh, to replace the poles that were leading at the fairgrounds for the hazard part of it in the fairground area. So, um, that's, this is what it is. We're gonna replace all the poles, put on new lighting, and, uh.
You say replace poles, you're just gonna reset the ones that are there or new?
Pulling the ones out and putting thirty, uh, fifteen new ones in.
Oh, putting brand new ones in.
Brand new ones in, thirty feet, setting them five feet deep, so they're twenty-five out of the ground.
Okay, and then they'll handle rehooking up the electricity, the wires, all that stuff is all uncovered in, in that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good work on doing that so quick. This will be done before the fair then for the campers?
Yes.
Bill has about fifty things going on.
I'm sure.
You're welcome.
Sure. Number nineteen, authorize a thirty day no cost time extension for existing contract with Paulwood Land Service for heat and shoot. Then we have authorize a thirty day no cost extension contract with TK Excavating for heat and shoot. And authorize a thirty day no cost extension contract with Express Underground for heat and shoot. Gary?
Uh, Commissioners, Gary Newborough, Sanitary Engineer, uh, the Planning Commission sent this over. Um.
Gary, I'm, I'm right behind you.
Oh, okay, all right, that's, that's, number twenty-two is also one with MJD Excavating for heat and shoot.
Number nineteen through twenty-two.
Who are you?
Nick Coggins, Trumbull County Planning Commission, sorry. Uh, nineteen through twenty-two are all the same. It's a thirty day no cost time extension. Uh, the original date set at the note to proceed for completion was May seventh. Uh, this is just giving all four contractors that were awarded, uh, the contract to tie low to moderate income households to the new sanitary sewer, thirty more days to finish up all the work that they're doing right now. Um, so all those are the same with the four contracts that were lowest of best bid for each. Then I can move on to twenty-three if you want me to.
Twenty-three, authorize Planning Commission to plan, prepare, and submit fiscal year twenty twenty-four Community Housing Impact and Preservation Chip Grant application in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars to Ohio Department of Development no later than June nineteenth, and advertise for the required public meetings and hearings. And authorize Board of Commissioners, uh, President of Board of Commissioners to sign and execute any and all pertinent and necessary documents and agreements associated with the application implementation of the Community Housing Preservation Program. And authorize Planning Commission to not request or propose professional inspection services, fair housing title services, searches, and request a letter of commitment from Mahoney County Lead Hazard and Healthy Homes Program for program collaboration when applicable.
Nick Coggins, Trumbull County Planning Commission. So this is for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program is our, uh, housing funds that we apply to from, from the state. Uh, helps us do repairs and rehabilitation to low to moderate income housing. Uh, one of the items that, um, Auditor Yoder went over was the closeout of the fiscal year twenty-one chip. So this is authorizing us to prepare, plan, and go after the fiscal year twenty-four chip to get more housing for funds. Uh, it has a lot of planning that goes into it, including getting, uh, qualified inspection services. Uh, we're required to do hop, fair housing, uh, in accordance with the, we have to do title searches on any app and make sure that, you know, if they're the only owner, how many liens they have. Um, and, uh, authorizing the President of the Board to sign all pertinent documents in, in, uh, relation to us applying for that grant, so that we can get everything submitted. Uh, it happens very quick. I know June nineteenth seems like it's a little bit far away, but there's a lot that goes into the planning and it happens very quick. So this is, is gonna get us started and moving in the right direction.
Okay. Thanks, Nick. Twenty-four, authorize and accept the reimbursable drop-off improvement grant in the amount of up to fifteen thousand dollars awarded through Geogee Trumbull Solid Waste District for the purposes of completing the recycling station improvements project located on county-owned parcels. And authorize Denny Malloy, President of Board of Commissioners, to sign the reimbursable agreement and authorize the maintenance department to expend up to an estimated seventeen thousand dollars to complete said improvements, including the installation of a fence, camera monitoring system, and new lighting, for which ninety percent of the cost will be reimbursed by Geogee Trumbull Solid Water District through drop-off improvement grant programs.
So Commissioner, that's our, uh, property, um, right out here with the bins. Uh, that's gonna make it more safe and secure. Uh, I, I know there's two parcels listed here.
But they're right next to each other.
But they're, but they're right next to each other. Um, in the past, we had some issues, um, with people dumping things that they shouldn't dump in the recycle bins. Um, we've cut down on that, but this grant will help us cut down on that even more.
And light it up.
With cameras and light and fence and, and light it up, so, um.
We're not gonna disturb any of the, we're not gonna disturb any of the neighbors across the street. I know there's a law for them, shouldn't be a problem, but.
No, or just light it up.
They probably welcome it, you know.
I was gonna say.
Yeah.
There's gonna be two new fisheye cameras that they could actually, uh, Jen Jones can actually zoom in on too to catch a license plate. For the cameras that are now, you start zooming, it gets cloudy and fuzzy, so you really can't pinpoint what it is. Um, there'll be two one-facing coming in off of, um, uh, Monroe Street from the, uh, Plant Parenthood side, and there's another one coming up from our Monroe Street to turn into the recycling center. So either way, we could catch and zoom in on license plates, and she could do her due diligence for illegal dumping.
And we're gonna allocate seventeen grand, but we're gonna get paid back fifteen out of the solid, solid waste.
We get fifteen thousand re- reimbursed, yes.
Good deal.
And, and that's part of our, for the whole district, that we're trying to do that, um, uh, not just here, but in Geogee County too, and all our drop-off sites, because it's a problem everywhere. So that, this, this drop-off improvement grant is gonna help with all that across the county and across Geogee County.
I applied for this last year and I forgot about it, but she sent me an email to remind me, and now we brought it to light, so.
Very good.
Terrible.
And then it's good for the public to know, we do have recycling. They have cardboard, uh, cans, bottles, right here on the county property in the backside of property they can go to.
And the eight-foot fence, it could help retain some of the, the debris that blows off the trucks when they try to dump, just to keep it maintained in an area instead of blowing across the street that our guys have to go pick up.
We've had people try to put mattresses and everything else in there, you know, just crazy stuff. But this'll cut down on all that stuff.
Now, something we did talk about too, utilizing possibly down there at the fairgrounds as another site for drop-offs, especially during the fair, but lead by example at our fairs, so that's something we'll look into.
I agree.
Some of our next meetings, that could be a centrally located area.
Yes.
Is that a town's abuse to have their own? And because of abuse, people throwing trash and.
They got rid of it.
Everything else, they got rid of it. But if we had it inside the fence of the fairgrounds where people can go to during normal business hours, somewhat monitored by the head, you know, headquarters officer or something, we need to look into incorporating that. All right, twenty-five, accept and concur with the twenty twenty-three annual report and meeting minutes with recommendation of the Taxation Center Review Council, Trumbull County. All active agreement approved prior to December thirty-first were reviewed. Eighteen enterprise zone agreements were reviewed and found to be in compliance.
Nick Coggins, Trumbull County Planning Commission, um, and I, I may have to work with you to.
Yeah.
Clarify this a little bit.
I think so too.
So there should be two bullet points. The annual Taxation Center Review Council was held on March fourteenth. Uh, the Taxation Center Review Council is appointed by affected communities and school districts to review all active abatements uh, as of December thirty-first of the previous year. So this year, this is a summary of the minutes. And then there's two different types of abatements that we're looking at. There's enterprise zones and community reinvestment areas. So there was eighteen enterprise zones reviewed. All of them were in compliance. Sixteen were recommended to be continued on with their contract, and two were recommended to be removed due to expiration of their contract. Their, their ten-year contract was up. They're due for expiration. So those were the two recommendations for enterprise and agreements. Separately, there were eight community reinvestment areas that were reviewed. Six of them found to be in compliance and two found to be in non-compliance. Of those eight, the Taxation Center Review Council recommended six of those agreements, including one of them that was found in non-compliance for continuation. One recommended to be sent back to the local community for renegotiation for modification, which was the other found in non-compliance. And another one, so, and one more was recommended for expiration due to its, um, contract being at, at the end of its term. So of the two that were in non-compliance, one was recommended for continuation. One was recommended to be sent back to the local community for, uh.
Why the difference in the two?
Um, both, both companies found in non-compliance will recommend, or were, there are, one, two different community reinvestment areas. One's in the city of Warren, one's in Liberty Township. Uh, they both claimed that their, a lot of their issues with, um, being in compliance, and that it was their job numbers or due to COVID, uh, the effects on their industry, one being a restaurateur. Um, their industry has high turnover, uh, due to that, and just so happened at the end of the year that they were lower than their compliance. Uh, one of the trustees that represented Liberty at that time, or le- represents Liberty on the Taxation Center Review Council spoke up, that he's spoken to the, to the owner, uh, he sees the sign out there, he sees how much they're paying people. So he wanted to, they, they, uh, for lack of a better term, decided that they would rather take mercy on them because it affects COVID and just recommend continuation instead of penalizing them, uh, due to factors outside of their control.
And the other?
The other one is in the medical industry, and they cited COVID as well. Uh, that's in the city of Warren.
Was that, was that for not the job creation?
That was for job creation and investment, uh, they had two, two areas. And, uh, and that one was recommended to be sent back to the city of Warren to renegotiate and either, uh, blow, change the terms of their agreement, basically, for the remainder of their contract or, or years of, um, that is, you know, something that's gonna have to be negotiated with them. But, uh, that was the recommendation of Taxation Center Review Council to send it back for renegotiation of those terms, whether it be percentage, length of time, a- any part of those tangible items in the agreement.
I have no problem with it.
Yeah, thanks, Nick. Twenty-six, approve the renewal proposal and execute the participation agreement as submitted by Rossi Insurance and Trumbull County Independent Insurance Agencies from the Corsa for general liability, property damage, law enforcement liability, auto fleet coverage, and it would commence May first, a remainder force for a period of one year. So this is basically our course of bill, I take it, um, where the total now is eight hundred twenty-five thousand three eighty-four, which is up from seven hundred fifty thousand last year. So we're up a hundred and twenty-five thousand, probably because of, well, varieties of things, but. All right, twenty-seven, approve the application for surety bond provided by Corsa for financial responsibility for underground storage tanks and authorize me to sign the approved application. The bond is for Trumbull County May first, ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. No cost for the bond, and our deductible will be fifty-five thousand for eight underground storage tanks. So imagine that.
Diesel fuel, uh, I think it's on all the county properties. I imagine it's covering the highway engineers as well as R two of the county here.
Okay. Twenty-eight, authorize County Commissioner Denny Malloy, President of Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign the data sharing and confidentiality agreement, which will permit Trumbull County Local Workforce Development Area Eighteenth staff to access, transfer, and utilize confidential data pertinent to the Administration of Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Ohio Means Jobs and Other Workforce Programs through the State of Ohio's Electronic Management System. And this was per recommendation of BIM?
Yeah, uh, BIM Turner, Workforce Development. Uh, this is a recurring document, uh, issued by the State of Ohio every two years or so to allow us to get data, primarily, uh, wage, record data, unemployment information to use for performance and for outreach. And it is, is all, some of it is confidential, therefore, that's what the agreement's about, protect confidentiality.
Gotcha. Twenty-nine, to appoint a member of the Trumbull County Senior Services Advisory Council to fulfill the term of the late Paul Davis, whose term will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Diane, how many, uh, applicants do we have?
That's your department. I don't see the application. I only.
Four. I believe there's four.
Okay.
Yeah, and you got these a couple of weeks ago, all of you did.
Yeah, yeah.
All three of them.
Go and read, go and read the names.
Ms. Guido. Uh, Nancy Goff. Hey, wait, Robin Roland. I think that's it. Maybe there's only three, yeah. Yeah, there's only three.
Ready? You sure can't, John.
This is Diane, Senior Levy Administrator. Um, I just want at least to put this on as a reminder to get this filled. We're in the process of our RFP cycle. It's about to be released. And we need that eleventh member to share in reviewing those bids and to make sure that we have odd numbers for voting on who to award. After we're done with this meeting, I'd like to talk to both of you about the RFP cycle, so.
Okay.
After everybody's action is done. Thank you.
Commissioner, you wanna review those tonight? I'll review, and then one of us can make a nomination tomorrow, and see if we concur.
Yep.
Okay, number thirty. And then, when did we still also have one board seat that we're still have open on the mental health board, I believe? I don't think we filled that one yet. Um, so that's an open one, and this is an open one. I don't believe there's any other board seats available right now, are there?
Up to my knowledge.
Yeah. Number thirty, to approve the certificate of countywide cost allocation plan prepared by Maximus and authorize Denny Malloy, President of Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute the document on behalf of the Board. The Board of Commissioners acknowledges receipt of the cost allocation plan, has reviewed the plan, certifies the statement set forth in the certification of countywide cost allocation plan. We discussed this with Alex a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. And. Ben Sher, uh, as well, um, she came in last meeting and, I believe, close to forty counties out of the eighty-eight use Maximus. Uh, they've done phenomenal work for us, especially JFS over there, uh, and CSEA. Um, so, recommend it, recommendation was to continue with them, and I concur.
And then, uh, number thirty-one, to adopt the resolution to authorize the expenditure from ARPA funds for Hartford Township Park improvements. And that is in the amount of one hundred eleven thousand four sixty-seven for installation of restroom facilities and lighting in the Hartford Township Park. So this, uh, kinda, uh, parallels what we've done with Kinsman, what we've done with Bloomfield, uh, what's recommended for us from Bristol, I believe, right now. Um, Liberty somewhat with their, the parks, so.
Bristol, excuse me, Trumbull County Auditorium, I think you had a Bristol went through the park.
They did, with the other park?
Yeah, yes, in favor of the ambulance.
Got you. Well, we did a part, we did the park stuff in Kinsman, we did the park and, uh.
Yes, that's correct.
And, uh, we did the Portland, uh.
The Slap Town.
Safety City or whatever.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Slap Town, um, Safety City, yeah, yeah, right.
So I have no problem with this. I think this is Hartford's ask. And then, uh, number thirty-two is the, uh, goes along with thirty-one, to make it official. Um, and now we'll reach out to someone from Hartford tonight, see if they wanna be here tomorrow when we do this. And again, Commissioner, I, I stopped by Minuteman, cause the prices were a little high. It seemed like on the laminated checkboard. We can get the dummy checks. They're about twenty bucks a piece. And, uh, they'll give us one laminated one, and then twenty of the other ones that we can have for the ARPA funds. Would like the permissions for, for Sher to go ahead and order those, so we can have them. Um, it was like four hundred bucks for the whole set, somewhere around that ballpark.
Yep.
And I, that was, they, they showed me their cost on those checks. Showed me the book, just with the paper and the, uh, the plastic they would use. They've got over twelve bucks in it. So I didn't feel twenty was out of line for what they do for us. All right, that concludes the, uh, agenda items, um, for a regular meeting tomorrow. Um, some of the other stuff we'll get to now. Uh, again, I did attend the joint commissioners meeting. Commissioner, I know you were under the weather that day.
Yes.
Uh, I attended it, Commissioner Frisco attended it, all three Mahoney County Commissioners, um, the airbase, the full board of the Port Authority was there, representatives of their Convention and Visitors Bureau, um, someone from the city of Youngstown, I believe, the, uh, Port Authority staff, Eastgate, um, the airbase council. It was, it was well attended, and a really good meeting. We learned an awful lot. There is a slideshow that, uh, Mr. Trevino would be happy to email over to you.
I will get that.
And they're doing a lot of the base. Besides moving the front gate, they, uh, they are building a, kind of a community walking park, which is south of the airport. And when you look, look at it from above, it, it's a forest, basically, trees. They're going in, doing selective cutting in the forest. And when you look from the sky, the, the cut in the forest, which is gonna have a walking trail and wildflower gardens, is in the shape of a C one thirty.
Oh, cool.
So, it's this massive C one thirty you see from the sky.
That'd be cool.
That the walking park walks all the way around it, you know, the size, the shape of the wings and, I mean, it's, it's acres and acres. So, it's, it's a long trail that they're gonna do.
Yeah.
And what's that? It's gonna be open to public. It's gonna be a walking trail where people can go and, and walk, take a hike and walk their, when they put the trail down, the cha, when you're walking, you'll be walking the shape of a C one thirty aircraft. But it's actually, you know, like ten times the size of one. It's, it's a, it's a big, big trail through the woods. So, it's, it's gonna be pretty neat. They also, uh, uh, and that was an idea that was, as I said, was drawn up on a napkin from the, the commander at the airbase. It, a drive-in in Columbus once that, hey, what can we do with this land? And he said, let's make it a park and make it in the shape of an airplane.
Yeah.
Should be pretty cool. Uh, they did explain the facts that now with all the improvements we're doing with the, the, um, runway, we're gonna have the second longest runway in the state of Ohio now, uh, second to Wright-Patt Air Force Base, which opens up the possibilities of future, um, expansion. Um, the other thing is we now have a flight school, and they can take up to a hundred and fifty students a year. And, and not only with that, um, but they are in the process now of recruiting like a net jets, have a regional center up here where they would store their jets overnight. We'd have aircraft mechanics that would work here. And if we have that, that's, that's big, 'cause that net jets is, right now, they, they put a lot of their planes overnight in Columbus. If they had them up here, those are the jets that are for rent, you know, for people in. Um, that would be a big economy boost to the airport if they did that. Forget the number, but it was like dozens of planes would be housed here every night and, and a whole aircraft mechanic, whole aircraft thing where they're hoping to get students through the flight school, through the mechanic school, and then be able to work right here at Youngstown Air Base, or Youngstown Airport. So, um, a lot going there with that. The Port Authority one...
Our sanitary sewer project, which is gonna sit...
That's helping a lot, and that's right. The sanitary sewer project is right where they have the flight school. So, that's gonna sit right directly where the flight school building is. Um, so that was a good tie-in there, good use of our funds for that. Um, you know, and all this stuff helps secure the airbase here for a lot longer time. When we are doing improvements on the, the runways and things like that, that's showing the government that we want a long-term partnership. Um, the C one thirtyJs are gonna be here in a couple of months. They're gonna have two events coming up that we'll be invited to, uh, for that, to celebrate that. Um, one big public, huge event when the planes get here, and then they have another one that's coming up before that that we'll get the invites to, and a lot, a lot of the other entities in the county. Um, and then port properties, they've got properties all over the place in the counties. They give an update on, um, some of the Stewart properties. I think there's four of them they just acquired that they're gonna repurpose for other buildings. They're remodeling and selling them to, that already have other businesses ready to move in. And then, of course, the Kimberly-Clark project is, uh, on time and on schedule with what they're doing. They're, um, they're actually doing some testing out there now where they, they pound the ground and they can see how stable the ground is, 'cause there's things buried in there from fifty, sixty, seventy years of making steel where they use dumps there where they just made and dumped buried things. So, they're securing all that, so when they put the buildings up for Kimberly-Clark, you know, it's, it's solid. So, they're, they're doing all the prep work for that right now, and, and they hope to be, you know, breaking ground on some of the buildings real soon and, um, very, very hopeful there. With that, they brought up that we do have a housing crisis for the employees that are coming in, not only there, but other areas. We have a, a workforce problem, and there, those are some of the key initiatives, not only the port, but Vision Twenty-Fifty. And, um, the Chamber of Commerce are working on it collectively, and, um, it was a lot of positives. It was just, uh, we, everyone walked out, they're feeling pretty good.
Yeah.
Um, Commissioner Frisco did speak up about WRTA and us not joining WRTA and our resistance to that and that, that she believes that's gonna hurt, um, development and workforce and, and all the good stuff that's happening, which I disagreed, um, with them. Um, and, uh, there, there is, yeah, there is a housing crisis, and she took offense that she believes TNP is just out there tearing houses down and not doing enough to remodel them. And I, you know, TNP, I'm, I'm hope, hopeful we'll be able to give their own response back to that because they took it on the chin pretty hard that they were just out making money tearing buildings down, tearing houses down when we're in the need for housing. That didn't go over real good with the whole group, but, uh, uh, I'm sure Matt Martin will address that at a later date or whatever with all the positives they do with the, with TNP. Um, so that was that. Do you have anything?
Well, I do, in defense of TNP, I mean, they, they're probably the, the model organization around the county when it comes to light remediation and, uh, you know, they, they, they have their side lot program, which obviously benefits a lot of homeowners. They have their, uh, remediation program. When, when a house is able, when a structure is able to be saved, they're gonna save it, and they're gonna put the money right back into it. They've shown that time and time again. Not that I need to defend them, but I guess, I don't know. I, I don't know how somebody can take a shot at TNP for all the work that's done. Anyway.
Phil, I know we're gonna be starting on the elevators, and I overheard you the other day, um, talking about storing a lot of the parts down there in cafeteria area and stuff. Just make sure when you do that, they're mindful that people can still get down there.
Yep.
Uh, we don't wanna disturb that at all. More and more usage is happening every week in the cafeteria area. We've got the chairs. We need to get the tables. We need to get that thing up and rolling, so Beth can get down there and decorate and get the, uh...
I'm decorating.
You're decorating, but she's providing, uh... We need to, we need to have some movement on that. We haven't done anything with that in, in quite a while, and, and people are using it. And it's time to get it finished, do a grand opening type of thing, ribbon cutting with, uh, gas or chair and AVI. Uh, Mr. Piaulos both said that they would like to be there for that. Let's, let's get on that pretty quick if we can.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, another thing that, uh, I hate to address, but we need to address, and I know this is gonna be a sticking point. Uh, as it was brought up to me today, we're only ten weeks away from the fair. So, we gotta secure cell phone stuff, secure the internet stuff for the patrons that utilize the fair. I know we're making progress on it, but we need to get some hard numbers and dates to make sure that's gonna happen.
Tim Haniford, Trumbull County IT, uh, yes, we are in the process right now. We have both Verizon and AT&amp;T onboard. They're gonna be bringing out their mobile units. Uh, we're working through right now just getting them powered. They do have a backup solution for that. Basically running them off generators. We'd like to get that power to our spots. Perry Brown is involved in it, so we're trying to get that worked right now.
Okay.
But everything else, there's, there's a fiber line out there provided by Spectrum. Uh, both AT&amp;T and Verizon are gonna be working with them to get, uh, connected up to it, and there we should be good to go.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, we need to, uh, you ready with that? We need to be ready with, if it's like an open, you know, thing for people to use or whatever. And I, I don't know how that ties in with internet, with their phones, is that...
That's, you know, regular cell service is what they're gonna be getting.
Okay.
So, that's if they've got data for internet on their phones, have that. Uh, we don't, they're, both companies are using it as a case study to, uh, provide a long-term solution. But for right now, this is all they can get. Now, we did reach out to T-Mobile. T-Mobile has assured us that they feel they have enough bandwidth out there to provide, uh, coverage for their phones. That's fine. That they're not willing to, to boost anything or take advantage of what we're looking to do. So, we do have AT&amp;T and Verizon onboard.
Yeah, that's big, 'cause that was a massive thing last year, big complaint.
Oh, yeah.
We promised we'd never have that happen again. I gotta back that promise up. Um, also with that, Commissioner, we need to discuss, um, we had our booth last year. The recorder had his booth, the, uh, I believe...
I shared with you.
You shared with us. Right, they had a big area across from us. It was wide open.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I remember.
And, uh, and, um, the women in our office had brought up an idea last year. They said, we got a lot of other departments that don't get involved in this at all, and we have a big space under there that we can utilize to promote the county and our services, our programs, everything from veteran services, the workforce development, do job and family services, the nine, recruiting for nine-one-one dispatchers. Um, but we...
Senior levy?
Senior levy. Senior levy's an important thing. We need to know what's going on. Tourism, um, but we can u, actually utilize that whole area underneath the grass stand. And if we acquire that through the fair board and we kinda coordinate it with the other agencies, I, I personally would like to see all of our agencies represented under there, so it's a full-service, one-stop shop. People could come in and learn about all these programs we have instead of just the commissioner's office and the recorder's office. Um, there's a, just a big area that's just open space. We did nothing with last year. And I really think especially now, as we're recruiting nine-one-one dispatchers, as we're recruiting, um, corrections officers and other agencies, that we highlight some of our things and maybe put a challenge out to each department head to at least come up with one tabletop display that could be there. We could man it with the staff. You know, we could be manned by the departments, just a couple of people overseeing through the shifts that we normally do.
Yeah.
And again, of course, I'd like to allocate the time again for, for our workers to be there. I know one commissioner doesn't agree it's a wise use of time. Anytime we can interact with the public in a positive way is a good use of, of time, a good use of taxpayers' time. They're meeting with, they're, they're getting served by the public.
Public hours, we should be doing.
Service, yes. So, that's something if, uh, I'd like your assistance on that and working with me to make that possible this year. And I, I hate to, uh, add any more work or whatever, but I kinda like to, to have Dawn work with Lisa on this and kinda share this thing, um, because last year they had some of the really good ideas that were there. And the ideas they had, I think, could come to fruition. We're gonna need a point person, at least for everyone to reach out to say, hey, you gonna have a table? Can you set a table up? Can you tear a table down? Bring your display, and then we have that common area that we can utilize for that.
Okay. Commissioners, um, you're referring to the space to the far left of your booth, across the way.
Straight across the way from us. They had that room that they used as a medical room.
The old medical room, yeah, right.
It needed some definitely...
And glove and TLC, yeah. It, the stuff in there, thirty years ago. So, yeah, it needs, it needs ripped down and turned apart. Yeah, I put all that stuff up there years ago, back in the day when they had the in-house, uh, medical. Now they have their own facility they bring.
Right.
Barn style.
But, but there's that big open concrete area across from us, just open. We could put tables, rows of tables, and have at least tabletop displays and, and decorate the walls there with some of our things and what the county has to offer. I, I think it'd be, something a little neat. When it rains, everyone comes under there and it gives them something to look at. We had people last year, just with, um, job and family services programs, I, I can't tell you how many questions when Oz was there. She was able to handle with people that weren't getting services, seniors, senior services. We had a couple of people wandering that were handicapped or seniors.
Yeah, we had a head...
That required about rides.
We had a head count.
Yeah, we did.
We did.
Yeah.
I can't remember what it was.
Auditor Yoder and her accountant, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Click, 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 click.
My clicker.
And it was big. It was, you know...
It was big.
It was in the hundreds a day that we served. It wasn't a small number.
Right.
I mean, I, I think, let's figure out what the total tally was, but I believe a couple thousand people that came through. And got some form of service from us. And if we increased it, um, you know, Gary, just if you, just the amount of money you've spent on your department and the, the amount of programs the county engineer has going on, letting them know projections of roads maybe this year are gonna be, um, repaved, or how many miles of roads we have in the county, and how many bridges. That's something the public can see, learn, have faith, have trust in our, um, officials, and I think it'd be a good thing.
Agree. Commissioner, before I forget too, I, um, I, I took a small tour of the site, uh, with Mr. David Ruon from Weathersfield Township. Uh, you know, they're, they're trying to erect that, uh, facility. All the site work has been done by, uh, Weathersfield Township, so they have put money into it. Uh, this is gonna be a multi-use, um, facility for safety forces, basically, uh, for training, for, uh, not, not just, and multi-jurisdictional, um, so that Mahoney County can use it. Other people, other, um, you know, fire and, and police force units can use it within the county as well for, for training. And, uh, as we know, there's a lot of certifications that go into that. They can utilize that. They can have the programs there. I think it's a worthwhile thing. I think it falls in line with the guidelines. I think they've put, uh, quite a bit of work into the site prep, uh, and they're just looking for, and, and I, I will also say they came to us with an initial ask for the entire amount. They've gotten a grant for, uh, a substantial amount of it, and I think that the ask of, what they're asking for us is about a hundred and fifty thousand, I, I believe. Um, I, I think it can be a worthwhile facility, especially when we talk about multi-jurisdictional training for safety forces. Uh, I don't think we have one of those, uh, uh, obviously in Mahoney County, I don't think. And I know we don't have one in Trumbull County. It can serve as a center, uh, for fire and police training and ongoing certifications and training. I think, uh, typically, it wouldn't, you know, new construction or something like that wouldn't qualify. But if you're tying it to safety forces and, and you're tying it to workforce development, which kinda ties both together, um, I think it's a, it's a valuable ask. And I, I know he's gonna reach out to you, and I just wanted to give you the heads up that I went and looked at it. Go in with a, with a, with an open mind, because I, I was skeptical at first, but I think it's, I think it's something that can not only serve Weathersfield, but the county and the region, so, my two cents.
Sounds great, and I, I will be meeting with, uh, MBSD today. Mr. Holloway wants to give me a tour of MBSD and show me the concerns they have. They got a pretty big ask. They want like a half a million for whatever.
They do, yeah.
But, um, I've got some questions. I need to learn about the facility myself, and then learn about the structure. And, and that's something I know they've got a multi-multi-million dollar project that they've received thirty-eight million or something like that, a grant, and they're still gonna be millions short. So, I don't know, you know, how we fit in with that, but I'll look at it and see, um, and make my decision on my own.
Yep.
And then, uh, um... And one other thing that just skipped out of my head, but I'll come back to it. It'll, it'll hit me. Um...
Wanna take some questions and then we'll come back to it?
Yeah, yeah.
Or anybody?
It'll, it'll jump back up again.
Anybody else have anything, uh...
We have, uh...
Hubbard.
Let's do, let's get Ben up here.
Yeah, they've been waiting patiently, yeah.
Ben Kyle, mayor of the city of Hubbard.
You probably don't need that.
Um, yeah, I just wanna come before you and solidify our ask for the city of Hubbard, for the ARPA funds. So, in, just as a quick little history lesson, when, before you, Denny, uh, when all the ARPA money came to the county, uh, I presented it in front of the commissioners at a meeting, asking for an INO study for the city of Hubbard that would parlay right along with the Trumbull County sanitary and maple wood project that's gonna occur in the township. So, obviously, that was years ago. Uh, there's no traction that was gained from that. City Hubbard has not, uh, received anything, uh, from the ARPA fund. So, back in January, I worked with, uh, Auditor Yoder and, and worked on a few other things and asked that I had submitted in January. So, through the portal. So, my first ask was not through the portal, because it didn't exist. And, uh, now I followed up and have an ask for our wastewater treatment plant for a brand-new replacement generator for the wastewater treatment plant. So, it's part of a larger project itself. It's, the ask is for four hundred and seventy-five thousand approximately for the generator itself. The overall project is, is closer to a million-dollar project that the city would take on with the replacement of the generator, transfer switches and, and all the original equipment that exists for the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, that wastewater treatment plant not only serves the city of Hubbard, but it also serves Trumbull County sanitary engineers, Carmont Heights agreement that the county has, and also parts, parts of Hubbard Township that are connected to our sanitary project. So, that's one of the asks, and then another very small ask was for the Hubbard City Police Department for a safety upgrade for fifteen thousand dollars for purchase of active shooter equipment to use for, uh, our fleet station to have and multi-jurisdictional, working along with Hubbard Township Police for any crisis that could occur at our school. So, those, those were... So, tho- those were the- the two things that I wanted to- to point out, and the, uh, since Gary's here. Uh, our Kermit Heights Agreement, uh, with the sanitary engineers also includes the new, uh, county engineers' outpost that at some point, they might want to connect to the sanitary, and there's already that agreement in place. So, the county definitely would benefit from making that investment into the wastewater treatment plant generator project for the City of Hubbard. So, those are the two things I- I wanted to bring forth, and also, uh, we're renaming another bridge in Hubbard for our veterans. So, uh, it will be working with Gary and the Engineers' Office, uh, for another World War I, World War II veteran. So, hoping to catch one of the last World War II veterans before they would pass on, uh, to recognize their service within the City of Hubbard. So, uh, I'm sure we're gonna be passing that in the first meeting here in May from Hubbard City Council, and then it'll make its way to you folks here, uh, at the county level. So, I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Mayor, we're getting down to the- the end of the ARPA funds. Um, that four seventy-five, just from what I remember, we bought a generator for Champion Police Department. We bought a generator for War- or for Cortland's Water Department. They were both in like the three hundred thousand dollar range, um.
No, I'm sorry, the one in Champion was not that. It was not for wastewater. It was-
It was for the police department, yeah.
Generator, so it was not in that range. It was cheaper.
Okay.
So.
So, is that the cost? I mean, have you raised about that's the cost of the generator?
Yeah, that- yeah, that's the exact cost of it, and- and obviously, uh, we, the city, are- are- it's a- a larger project. So, in a sense, if- if the Commissioners are willing to do the same that they did for Cortland, you know, in that sense of whatever that was, if it was, say, three hundred or three seventy-five, that would go towards the- the larger project of purchasing that generator, installation, and, you know, all the necessary electrical upgrades to get it in place. So, it's a- it's a project that, you know, when- when it goes out to bid, maybe it's seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. But, you know, a portion of that could go towards, obviously, ours would just all be local match on the- on- on the back end there. Uh, so, I wanted to present, when we made the updated, uh, ask itself, was for the exact cost of the generator itself. Because firstly, we have two very large-scale generators that both- that are fully supplemented for the plant for long-term outages and so on and so forth. So, this, uh, and- and they're original to the build of the plant. So, the- the new ask for- for this generator, for the four seventy-five, is one unit that will, you know, obviously, technology, you know, one unit that does the same as the two.
Commissioner, that's one thing. Hubbard is one that we have not done anything for the past. Been in the pipeline since before I was here. Um, I think there's still just a couple other townships and villages and cities that haven't gotten asked yet. One of them, I think, maybe Lordstown being one of them, and Green never submitted anything.
Yep.
Um, but they- Hubbard has asked, and Hubbard and Hubbard Township, it seems like, keeps asking, getting the door shut on them, asking, getting the door shut, and getting denied on certain things. So, I would- I would love for us to make a concerted effort to grant that for the City of Hubbard. And the fifteen thousand one, it's a no-brainer. Um, the generator one, you know, there is a bigger ask on that, but I- I would be happy with doing what we did with Cortland, which I think was three hundred thousand.
I don't remember offhand.
Three hundred, three-
Right.
Somewhere about that. We can look and see what we did with the other cities, so we're fair and equitable there, 'cause we did cut theirs back. They had an ask of seven hundred, and then I think we gave them three hundred.
Yep.
And if we fall along the same lines of that, then I don't think we're- I think we still have a little bit of money left after that. It's not gonna bring us to the end or where we're bare bones.
Close.
And I did see today on the CCAO, uh, newsletter that federal government has changed some of the guidelines with ARPA funds, that if you had a project approved and you changed the scope of it, those funds can be appropriated to something else. In the- it- it's- I'll show you the news release we got today, that they are- they are allowing the cities to-
What's going on?
That's not what- I- I will check with Tanya, but you-
This was today. This is today's-
With all due respect, Mr. Commissioner, you might have misread it.
Well, this is the National Association of County Officers, or Co- or Commissioners Officers, that had that thing in there with the four new, uh, things that are gonna relax effective September first, and, um, so we're- it looks like there may be some-
Well, and I don't- I'll- I'll back up a little bit. Changing the scope of a project is different than just going, "Can I take the rest of this money and spend it on something else?"
Correct, correct, correct. But changing the scope slightly, it included employees, things. It had a whole bunch of things in there. I'll- I'll show you.
I will look at it.
Um, so I- I don't think- I think the money allocated is gonna end up going where it goes. I don't know how much money we're gonna get back after we're done with all the stuff, 'cause like I said, we're at the- we're starting to scrape the bottom. We're at the bottom of it, and with a whole bunch of maybes pending. Um, but this is one Hubbard has- has not gotten anything, so.
I agree.
I- I'd like to allow them to be able to put into the portal and, um-
Put them in the yes category.
Yeah, and what I'd kind of like to do with that, uh, Mayor, if it would be all right with you, if you can put in for the fifteen and then put in for three hundred, make it three fifteen.
Yeah, so, uh, my original ask were in January, so I went through and did everything in the portal in January.
Okay.
Um.
I think you did it directly to me. There was no portal.
Okay, well, you being the portal, yes.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, so, everything was submitted for- for the police one was submitted in January, and then the wastewater, uh, the generator was ori- I originally applied for a full, like, eight ninety-five for the actual project. Then I resubmitted recently for just the generator at the four seventy-five, so whatever you need me to do, I'm more than happy.
I will- I will look at what you have submitted and then, um, figure out what we need to do, if we need to make an adjustment.
That's fine.
A- a lot of times on these asks, when they've been- they've asked over what we- or we've decided, the Commissioners, I'm sorry, have decided to pay less, it's just a matter of me communicating with Attorney Rogers that we want that resolution written that way. He can approve it for that amount, rather than just what they asked. But I- I will make sure of that, and I will put them bottom of the list, yes list.
Yes.
All right.
In line, yeah, in line.
All right.
If- if they already had one from January, keep it where it is and just modify, adjust it.
Hold on.
I don't want him to lose his place and go to the back of the pack. I want to keep him in line where he was.
Well, okay. There's a couple that, um, I'll- I'll get it. Um, I'll work it out, and if you guys don't like it when I present it next week, you can tell me.
Commissioner, also, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize longtime, uh, former Hubbard Mayor John Darko. Uh, his commitment to his community even bleeds over into retirement, I guess.
That's right.
He's here, and I just want to say thank you. Uh, got it, got it.
Um, I see Mike Salam when he's here. Do you have something for us, Mike? Come on up to the big boy's table.
Oh, thank you, Commissioners. Mike Salam, my Trumbull County Transit. What I just gave to you was a new brochure that I have just put together, uh, for transportation. This will go out with the applications, when I send the applications out. Um, also, on here is a website. Trumbull County Transit does have a new website. Thanks to Lisa. She was great. I've worked with her. I mean, I would ask her something, and it would be done quickly. I was like, "Oh, my God, is she talking with it already? I don't have time to check." You know, but she was great working with this website. So, we have a new brochure and a new website. Now, both of these items, we need to stay in compliance with the fifty-three-ten, uh, grant and ODOT, uh, the ODOTs, that we're working with to comply, so.
This is part of that compliance.
This is definitely part of the compliance, because-
So, so, do we- when- when people dial this number, is that a central dispatching?
As of right now, no. That's the number here, that's on- oh, which number are we talking about right now?
Whichever one.
Okay, the eight-seven-seven, no, that's, um, for, um, Ohio real-
Weren't we looking into, you know, one- one of our providers acting as central dispatching to?
Actually, no. What we're looking at, sorry, Commissioner, what we're looking at is Neil Ride. And I'm still working with that, with Neil Ride, for central dispatching, and where we're at with that is right now, I believe, Cincinnati is doing theirs right now. We're at the end of the list with WRTA in the fourth quarter. They'll be working on ours of this year.
I think that's critically important. It's gonna save time for our providers, and we can get that going. I think that's one of the central tenants that we've been talking about for some time now, so that-
Yeah.
Nobody feels they're being slighted, you know, it's just a impartial, um, central dispatching unit that's gonna dispatch rides. Why did we get this ride and not that ride, that sort of thing, you know?
Yeah, so where that's at at this point, um, with, uh, Neil Ride, the group I work with is Neil Ride. Uh, we have a meeting every two weeks that goes over where we're at and-
Yeah.
-funding and everything, and all that, and then they have a regular meeting every two months that I go to, so, Neil Ride for this. Because there's other aspects of Neil Ride that we don't deal with, but-
Mike, have we gotten any update from WRTA in their first month, with the two routes?
In regards to WRTA, I did talk to Dean Harris, Executive Director. Uh, he had no update for me. What he will- what he wants to do was since eight- uh, March was a partial month, and April's a full month. He wants to do both together, and I said, "That's fine." So, that we're gonna- we're gonna do that. However, uh, talking with the driver, our drivers, and talking with Dean, um, there has been increased ridership for these routes. In fact, when I'm looking out of my window where I'm at, I'll see as many as ten people standing, waiting for the bus down there. Now, granted, yes, I know some of them are for the Warren Express, some of them for the other ones also. So, I do know, I couldn't tell you at this point how much ridership is going up or whatever, but I will get you some information probably sometime in May, those numbers.
Okay.
Okay.
And this meets all the criteria for the grant that we need to have in here?
Yeah, um, back in December, a gentleman came out from ODOT, and two of the things, when he went through the review that we're gonna have to go through, two of the big things that he found is not false, but we needed to correct was the brochure. They have a good brochure and the website.
Diane, how many- how many rides are we able to secure now through the senior levy, or not senior levy, through the grant that we got through the State of Ohio, which was ultimately ARPA money, but, uh?
We're up around forty-two thousand trips.
Wow. That's-
We used to be a-
Thirty.
Eighteen thousand one year.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Ten years.
So, the- so, the need is growing, and the funds are not growing.
Yeah. Yeah, so in regards to ridership, I did- I did a, uh, I didn't bring it with me, but I did comparison from last year to this year. We're still on pace to about to do thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand rides again this year, so we're- we're holding tight to our rides, the ridership and our vendors. I know our vendors are getting to the point, I need to get new vet- some more vendors in here, but they're, you know-
We've tried that in the past, and that-
Yeah.
No avail. I don't- I don't understand why you can't get one of the larger, um, I mean, the- the ones we talked, I can't think of.
Right, I know, I know you're saying. Well, um, right now, I'm working with Diane, and we're putting- trying to put a list together and start being able to, um, have other vendors that we can send stuff to.
Okay.
Places practically zero.
Yeah.
That's the big thing.
That's the other thing. We (laugh) we had one complaint so far this year that I could hear of, and not a problem, and I followed up with the dri- the client.
And they used to call the Commissioner's Office.
Yeah.
A lot.
Anyone seen Mr. Joseph lately? He used to come to all the Commissioner meetings, and-
Yeah, um, I've talked to him. I- I've- he's not able to.
Okay, but he's okay. He's healthy.
He's okay. No, he's okay. He's just, uh-
Just wanna make sure, 'cause I haven't heard from him, seen him around in a while.
Yeah. Um, but in regards to, you're talking about the vendors, um, Cuffer Care Van has received two separate grants, one which was the Diane's grant. Well, not your grant. Healthy aging, which I believe was twenty-five thousand, another one from Western Reserve for about twenty thousand. So, they've got about forty-one thousand dollars. I've been working with Dave Merkin, and what these grants are gonna be for are the clients that call me and say, "I've got a trip tomorrow, or I've got a trip in three days. How can you help me?" Well, I can't get a pa- paperwork so I can get through in time. So, this is for clients that definitely, um, have a doctor's appointment in the next few days.
Last minute emergency.
Last emergency.
Meet the criteria, but haven't been scanned through yet.
Right, or-
Processed.
Right. He's also gonna look at same day. If we can get somebody on the same day, because there's our times where people are just- his drivers are sitting.
Good, good, good.
So, he's gonna be looking at same day. Uh, the other areas he's looking at would be, um, we do, I'm not gonna say a lot, but we do quite a few, I think, trips up to Cleveland, and some of these people can't afford it. So, this money would go to help these clients that can't afford the trips to Cleveland.
Interested to see those numbers from WRTA, though, about the-
Yeah, oh, definitely.
On those two routes.
And the final thing that I have is, um, we've talked about this before. I've talked about changing the Trumbull County Transit name to like, something like Trumbull County Connect or whatever, something of that nature. Um, I have talked to people at ODOT. The problem with doing it right now is I cannot do it during the time we're drawing money down or having applications. So, I'm gonna be going to a, uh, actually, Diane and I are going to a conference in May. I will be talking to them about that one's the best time to try and change the name from Trumbull County Transit to Trumb- Trumbull County Connect, Connected, Connected. I've had several ones. I'm not- haven't landed on one yet, but working on it.
Okay.
That's what I've got.
I'm curious, um, Mayor Kyle, being you're mayor of, uh, one of the cities here in the county, one of the most of whom can hear you. And I- I didn't mean to say big boy's table earlier, it's that- We all know the ladies run the county here. The Bar for Women run the county, but, um, you're, as a mayor, where do you see need with transit in this whole big picture? I'm sure you're watching from the side. You were on the senior levy board before. You've had a vested interest in this. As a mayor, where do you see our- our fit in, or your city fit in with WRTA and/or any of the other transportation services we have here in the county?
I think one of the biggest needs, and it's, you know, being- being addressed and tackled as- as best as we can, is that the- those seniors, those disabled, those veterans, those- those are those critically, uh, folks that need that critical transport, that they might not be able to have any other means of- of getting where they need to go. And- and addressing that and focusing on- on their needs is- is something that's extremely volatile for their success in- in our county. Um, for us in the city, I- I just told former Mayor Darko that unfortunately, there was a misrepresentation, I think, recently, where Hubbard and Niles both were, at- at one of your meetings, someone mentioned that both Hubbard and Niles were, uh, on- onboard with, uh, some WRTA transit and- and things like that, and I think that was a misrepresentation, uh, of- of the truth. I can't speak for Niles, but I- I know for us in Hubbard, you know, one of our biggest concerns are our seniors. And- and I- I do not know, uh, purely based upon calls that I receive on a daily basis, I don't have people knocking down my door to say, "I need public transit, and I need the assistance to get where I need to go." Um, we have, thankfully, a- a rotary community van. We have volunteers that drive our seniors in the community to get to their doctor's appointments and- and to get where they need to go on- on a few times-a-week basis. Any other time, we're referencing the- the senior levy, and- and that if you're a senior, to call Diane and- and find that transportation, and that there are a lot of means out there to get someone where they need to go. Uh, as- as far as a- a line, for instance, that would make stops in Hubbard, I, at this point, cannot say that there would be anyone on it. Uh, and- and I- and I think that, uh, are- are there viable routes within the county? Absolutely. Or- or is there something that is needed for our outlying communities for us? I mean, half the time when people call, they need to go to Youngstown. You know, from- from my community, my little world that exists in the corner of the county, they're not necessarily asking to come- come here to Warren or wherever it might be. They might need to go to the hospital or a doctor's office that's in Mahoning County. So, I mean, there- there really isn't a cookie cutter fit that's- that is something that, sure, we're gonna tax everyone, and it's gonna, you know, make every, uh, solution viable. It- I don't- I don't really know in- in our county. I mean, look at the size of our county. We're the twelfth-largest county i- i- in the state of Ohio. I mean, just, there's the north of the county, you know, north of three oh five. And- and there's so many different things that- that we can talk about and- and try to find a solution, but I really don't think there is a cookie cutter solution that- that truly exists. But focusing on our seniors, our disabled, and those medical trips, and- and our veterans, I think, is- is, at this point, is the best that we can do for- for what we have in front of us and- and our biggest need. And- and as I mentioned, I think that there's a lot of viable routes that- that could impact a lot of people when you have higher densities of population. I- I- I truly think that that's- that's, uh, something that needs to be looked at, but if you come in the- the four corners of the county, I- I don't know what- what there might need to be, other than the fact that a senior needs to get to a doctor's office. And- and if they don't have family to be able to take them, then that becomes a- a big problem, and thankfully, they're able to call and make those arrangements and- and be able to get those things. But, uh, guys have a lot of work in front of them. Thanks, then.
Thanks for your input. No, but that, I, I concur with the mayor. There's not, there's not a solution that you can point to that's gonna fix all the, all the problems. So a hybrid system is something that we're trying to work out right now. And how viable and how feasible that is, we won't know until we see it through. So, uh, we've taken some, some, uh, pretty big steps with WRTA and we've retained our, our providers that have been so good to us in the past as well. So, um, it's working right now.
To add one more thing with, uh, the mayor said about doctor's appointments. One of the things that our service does is we go out of county. So I get a lot of calls for people that have doctor's appointments in Mahoney County, in Youngstown, wherever it might be. We take them there. We take them to Cleveland Clinic. We've taken some to Akron. We have a, and because we border Pennsylvania, a lot of those people that live on the border over Pennsylvania. So we take them out of the state. So that's something they don't know how many other counties are actually doing that. You know, we're actually going out of state, out of county. Come on ahead. Thank you very much.
Commissioner, the thing I was thinking of earlier that I forgot is, um, the governor's gonna be in town tomorrow to make a big announcement about Jobs Ohio and not leaking any of the big stuff. But we are now in our, gonna be in our own zone for Jobs Ohio. We stay with Cuyahoga County, which got a lion's share of the money. And now the way the Chamber of Commerce has lobbied with the Port Authority to give us our own zone, it's gonna be Ashtria, Bula to Columbiana. And there's the potential of us, um, having twenty to thirty million dollars that, that will be shared amongst the four counties here that we never had before. Before we got a couple million, after Cuyahoga, we got most of it. It was split. Now we got, we have our own zone. It's gonna be huge for economic development, economic impact here, uh, with, with Jobs Ohio program. Uh, in that same light, um. Commissioner, where will he be? Everybody knows. He's gonna be at the, uh, the mall, at the, uh, banquet hall at the mall. I believe it's from two to four tomorrow. Okay. Um, so we are invited. We got an invite from there, of course, I'll, I'll be in attendance. And hopefully you can make it too, but it's a big announcement that they're doing with the Chamber of Commerce. And, uh, economically, uh, the Chamber tells us it's one of the biggest things that's happened to us in this corner of the state. And as, as long as the Chamber can remember as far as the amount of money that we're gonna have, be entitled to now with this new region. And for the governor to do that, that's because of all the hard work of people up here, um, the dynamics of the, uh, economy up here, dynamics of the politics up here, and we've had some people that have been bending the mayor, or the governor's ear for a long time. Our Chamber of Commerce, our port, Matt Blair, people like that that have been telling the, the governor, hey, we need some love up here. We need, we need you to come up here. And we've got kind of a red carpet rolled out from Columbus the last couple of years. And this is another way that, that this administration in Columbus has shown that Mahoney Valley is a viable, uh, you know, we're not the afterthought anymore, you know, that we, we are, um, getting the attention that I think is due for our people up here. And it's, it's just a good, good sign of things to come besides everything we have coming with Lordstown and Kimberly Clark and everything. Now you add Jobs Ohio region, based out of Trumbull, Mahoney, Columbia, and Ashtria, Bula. That, that's a major, major economic boost for us that, that we've never had before. Cause a lot of those funds went to Cuyahoga County in the past. And most all of them did. You know, they, the, Cuyahoga would, would scarf up all the money and then we got the crumbs. And now we're gonna be right there with Mahoney County neck and neck for getting a lion's share of the money. And, uh, because of the population that we have here, this is gonna be a big deal. So we welcome the governors and I will tomorrow and it, it's good for all of us. Also a meeting with, um, um, Sherrod Brown's Regional Director next Tuesday. He set an appointment up to me and he wants to know what we need here in Trumbull County. What, what do we need from our, from the Senate? What do we need from federal funds? Um, a, a lot of that stuff hopefully will be, uh, capital improvements, uh, for next year to start talking about that type of stuff in some of the bills. And, um, of course I'll follow up best with what we've talked about with Mosquito Lake. Uh, but economic development around Mosquito Lake, infrastructure, things like that, I'm gonna talk to him about and see through that office, through the Senate office, if we can partner him up with Dave Joyce and, and get ourselves some access for more federal funds here in Trumbull County also. On top of what we're already getting from ARPA and state and what we're making ourselves, um, with a increased, um, sales tax budget that we've had in the last couple of years. So.
Sounds good.
Good things. Um, Gary, did you guys have something before we get to the boring stuff?
Hello.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Not your stuff, sorry.
Gary Shaffer, Trumbull County Engineers Office. I got Michael Klingham in here to sit in the office.
Sorry, Gary.
Oh, yeah.
So the world can hear you.
I'm not allowed as loud as the mayor here, I don't need the microphone. Now, I just wanted to discuss the four ARPA funding requests that we had put in. Uh, the original request was for loss of revenue from twenty one twenty one. Uh, the Ohio Department of Transportation has put together a spreadsheet of calculations on those narrow defensible numbers that have been utilized by several counties throughout, county engineers offices throughout, uh, the state to receive funds for that. Uh, the total amount is eight hundred seventy nine thousand two hundred seventy one. Any part of that, unfortunately, that loss of revenue, be greatly appreciated, um, to help us offset, um, those losses of revenue. The other three requests were for projects that we'd received, uh, fu, grant funding for. It was to cover our local match funding for those projects. The first one was for the twenty three, uh, road paving program, which is already underway. Um, it was for roads in Liberty, Howland, and Brookfield Township. Um, the second one was for, um, West Park and Ostown Warren Road Resurfacing, which is currently underway also. Uh, that was for three hundred fifteen thousand. I'm sorry, the first one for the twenty three was for five hundred thirty six nine seventy three. Um, and then, uh, the final one was the twenty two bridge rehab program, um, out there on, in Brookfield. We replaced that superstructure. Uh, we're under, um, construction there in Orangeville. And, uh, the last one will be down on Kibler Two and Warren Township. That'll be the last structure we'll replace, uh, as part of that bridge rehab program. And that funding request is for three fifty one nine sixteen. Um, you know, I understand that we, we've reallocated funding, uh, to, to keep those projects moving over the last year or so, and that's fine. But we request any funding possible for that to offset other costs for, uh, projects we had to move the money from. And those would include Sodom Hotchens, uh, Ridge Road, the two lane section there by the airport, and a King Graves Road also east of one ninety three. We'd really like to get, uh, improvement stage of those roads. And any funding we can get from the ARPA would be put towards those roads out in those areas. Any questions, I'll take them. Otherwise, I appreciate your time here.
The only question I have, I, I got requested, I have a meeting next Tuesday with the Amish community. They wanted to talk to me about their roads in Amishville up in the northwest part of the county. I don't know what in the tale, but they said they've got.
Amishville.
They said they have forty or fifty Amishmen that wanna meet with me next Tuesday to discuss conditions of some of the roads and, and I know they don't pay into the.
Sounds like it's a car.
Tax per se with license plate fees and things. We don't have money coming back from that. I understand they give just a lump sum to the county every year. It's like thirty five grand or forty grand or something they give. Okay. Anyway, I'll be meeting with them next Tuesday and I may have to call on you for advice when that happens.
Absolutely. And we've done a lot, um, Gerber Road, north of eighty seven, a few years back, we did with the assistance of the Planning Commission, Partner Mashville, that was two and a half miles, well over half million dollars. We improved that road. And that's kind of been the standard bearer out there, uh, with how to address those roads. This year we are putting four hundred thousand up, I think, and that's money also, you know, we appreciate, um, you know, with the lost revenue, we could put towards, um, the Hoffman Norton Road and also, uh, Strew Pickhocks. Put a lot of money into those two roads.
You, you might wanna give Commissioner Malloy that handy map that you have that has exactly which roads belong to which entity. Because the person on the street, including the Amish, don't always know which roads are township roads, which roads are county roads. And there's a difference. If it's a township road, they can't do anything about it. If it's a county road, they can't.
No, that's a great point. And most of them probably do live on, on the, the local roads, yeah, not the county roads.
There was one, one of the questions that I know they're gonna, they asked was road widening. They said they wanted a road widening project like they have in Georgia County. I'm not familiar with what Georgia County does compared to us, but they said they have, we have a lack of, of wide, um, buggy, buggy accessible roads on some of our bigger roadways.
And, and some of that, actually, I think ODOT does that on the big ones, um, eighty seven, uh, um, five th, or five twenty eight. They have extra like, extra wide shoulders for the buggies or specific buggy lanes. And that would be in ODOT.
Yeah, I mean, ODOT does a lot of that. I think they do it on some of their man, like Old State Road is a little wider than our state road, uh, when you get up.
Yeah, oh, yeah, when, yeah.
They just, they just open it up.
Yeah, when it becomes six zero.
But that's very costly to do road widening.
Sure would be.
Definitely we can discuss and all the pros and cons of doing that. Most of that's just financial. But, um, yeah, get the county map so that which delineates what's county.
That would be great. That would be great.
And the roads to focus on too, but like I said, we, we got about four hundred thousand. We're putting in two roads up there in Farmington.
Yeah.
Already this year.
And that, that would be helpful. Like you said, I'm going in blind to it, but I'm sure I'll have a lot of questions when I come out of there that I'll call on you after that.
You know, I have Steve run down a map or two, share them with them too.
That would be great.
Some more county maps, yeah. Yeah.
Other people use them anymore. We don't get thrown like we used to.
It was always, it's super helpful for me when I was a trustee to have those. And then they're also helpful on the campaign trail.
Yeah. Most residents know whether our state roads, county roads, and local roads, you're right.
There were some billing things back and forth with you guys and Sherrod, did you guys get that rectified or worked out?
Well, it's not rectified yet. We are trying, but, um.
Is there's anything we could do or you need to address or we can? Okay.
Maybe he's reached out and we haven't got it from them yet. So I let Sherrod know that, that he reached out to them asking, so we'll get that.
Okay.
We'll get it over two hundred thousand. We, and we have not gotten any ARPA money at all, even the whole time, just as a, uh, sorry, the whole time. Just, uh, just so you know, our office did take a big revenue cut, but we have not, you would think the engineers office, since it was license ga, license tax, ass tax, they would've paid some, but we have not gotten any given our revenue loss.
Were there, were there any programs through ARPA like that went to engineers specifically in other counties?
No.
No.
Literally, right. Difficult to say, but not one penny ran through ARPA to any of the county engineers offices.
Hmm.
It's kind of shocking that it didn't.
Yeah. Well, I guess people still renewed their stuff, but I'm sure gas sales had to have been down.
Twenty twenty one were the biggest hits, you know, eight hundred and seventy six thousand dollars was kinda.
What about all the electric vehicles too?
That's coming up too.
Well, you just keep throwing.
It is what it is. I don't.
Yeah, I, I bought a hybrid recently too. So, yeah, I'm dipping into the pocket over the office. Dude, with, uh, a lot of that, yeah. But, yeah, there's something that's being discussed at the federal level, not just at the local, at state level. Brian?
I mean, I've worked with Patch and Eddie over in Mahoney County, you know, on our sales tax for just infrastructure. Um, and that money does not go to any staff, any equipment. It literally just goes to roads and haulers. Um, so that's something that I think I have brought it up over in Trumbull County, but I understand no one wants to talk about raising taxes, obviously. Maybe it's something that we can get with the commissioners on and read, well, you know, get. Cause I think something's gonna have to be done, especially if the federal level and the state level's not doing it. I mean, you don't wanna be behind the eight ball and have that money locked there where you could try to get ahead of it and have a, you know, get ahead of the curve.
No, we, of course we don't wanna raise taxes, but the engineer has made comments before, even if we raised it, it was a slight percentage. He said he'd be able to pave every county road in Trumbull County if we got that percentage, which they do a lot with little in, in the department. And it isn't, um, it is something we're gonna have to address in the future. Cause our roads are, you know, getting wear and tear every day, just like everything.
And you guys did, I mean, you got an awesome incubator for, you know, out of town people coming into the Eastwood Mall. I mean, you try to blow Mahoney County out of the water as far as that revenue coming in, I would think. The other thing, comment that I would like to make about the Amish buggies, um, I've worked on, I used to work on a lot of the road projects outside of Mahoney, Trumbull, Columbiana County, over in Georgia, Stark. Um, those, there's certain wear items on the, on the cleats of the horses and the, and the buggies themselves, wheels, that those Amishmen, they should not be using for that carbide is, I mean, they tear up the road so bad. And I know ODOT's been trying to get their mixes right to accommodate that. But you know how much it is to pave a road. And then you start widening roads and then they're gonna tear that section of road up and you're gonna have to be paving another lane. So I just.
I understand there are some counties that require rubber on the, on the wheels.
Yeah, that's not, you know, in the interior, I know some states, yeah, it's mandatory. You have to have the, the other rubber.
Maybe Lancaster, Pennsylvania, might have been one of them where I saw it.
I haven't seen it in Ohio yet. I don't think we can enforce that. Go back to what Ken, uh, Commissioner Ken Lomazier said about, uh, the electric and, um, and the hybrid, you know, a lot more dual vision vehicles. We got that, uh, gas tax increase a few years back. We didn't see the spike we thought we were just because of that reason. Um, cause sales were way up for electrical vehicles, hybrids, electric vehicles. And we were sitting there, you know, thinking we're, we get a big boost up to two million. I don't think we've even hit a million, maybe seven hundred fifty thousand increase.
I, I gotta imagine that's being addressed in the state house right now somehow or some way, somebody picking up the toy.
Mileage, you keep hearing mileage tax, you know, you, you keep hearing these things thrown around. Eventually it's gonna change.
Gonna happen.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you. Okay, Diane, let's, let's go to you before we get to Martha. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
I keep hearing tax increase. Part of why I'm here. We have our, our RFP round about to come up. And I do have a carryover balance that I would like to expand the money that we put out from the services. Cause we have waiting lists, drastic waiting lists in Homemaker. You get called for it all the time and we just have to tell people you're on a waiting list.
Do we have anybody mowing right now? That's the big one.
Yeah.
So we do have mowing crews that they can call and get?
I'm working in a, so the Comfort Keepers has that contract.
Okay. So if there's a senior, the grass isn't getting mowed, they can call and potentially get some assistance with that?
Get on that list to get served.
I'm sure that question.
So back to Homemaker, there's a four hundred person waiting list in the Homakers. We're only serving fifty people with the money that we have allocated. I wanna double that just because that's what we have available. That's only going, it's not going to put a dent in the number of people that we have, are serving. So I would like to put the cart before the horse and use up the carryover money to expand our services. In the meantime, our levy renewal is coming up. The council would like to have a replacement levy. That just brings our current funding up to current value. We've never had an increase since two thousand five. We are working on double the amount of population as seniors on two thousand five funding. So the replacement money we looked at would bring in an extra one point two million dollars. So I'm talking about using my carryovers to expand services now. And then we have three chances to get that levy to be passed in order to continue the services at that level then.
There's been a, some talk about that transportation is the thing that's draining this?
No.
It's not.
No.
It's not.
In fact, that's the reason why our carryover has increased a little bit.
That's right.
Most of it's because of COVID. During that COVID, we spent half the money for two years, so.
And, and those other services are the ones that need.
Homemaker Services is the one that's worse. Um, I looked at, to keep people in their homes, what we're servicing now. If we have just, I, I, I looked at it, one person that needs to go into skilled nursing costs ninety six thousand dollars a year. My mom was in skilled nursing. Multiply that by five thousand people, you're at four hundred eighty million dollars. So for our one point two million dollar ass to keep people in their homes is a lot cheaper than putting them in a nursing home or an adult daycare situation. So the reason why I'm here is our RFP is up for, uh, legal ass request is going to be on next week's agenda. I have the RFP together with an increase in the areas of service when we have waiting lists. My carryover budget can carry that increase. If the levy would not pass with the up to date value, then we would have to cut back our services in two years.
Right, so what?
Two years. So this would give us.
When, when would it normally be up for renewal?
Our levy is up this year. This is our first year we can ask for.
Okay, so. So you're not asking to renew that, you're asking to replace it with a bigger?
Right. No, it'll be the same mileage, but what happens is when you, I explained this. No, it'll be the same millage, but what happens is when you, I explained this, I'm sorry, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County auditor. When we started talking about the values increases and how, how some levies are just set to raise a certain amount of money, that's one of those levies at that millage, that's the maximum millage, right?
And that property value did not increase our, our levy.
Right, right, and, and it, it increased things that were, um, at a fixed rate, not at an effective rate. And so, when you do a renewal, a renewal just keeps the same amount of money that you're gonna raise. If you do a replacement, it's the same millage, but it's more money because you're, instead of taxing on what the values were back when you started, you're tax, taxing on the current values.
So, because people have their values grow up by the state, they're paying more, so now we want to make them pay more for the seniors on top of it. Or the state raising, and what we're all saying, the state needed to reevaluate, we think it's too high.
Well, absolutely.
And there are people challenging it, there are people blaming us for it, so we don't, so we want to add on a bigger tax onto the state's mistake that we're calling, at the same time, doesn't seem to sit real well.
I, I'm not gonna speak to what you should do, all right, but first of all, it is, it is, the, what we are doing as far as the values go is by statute, for sure, that's the state, but there's also entities that benefit more than others from that, including our schools. We have something called the twenty mil floor, right? That means we can't, a certain, a combination of the, of a certain types of levies for the schools can't fall beo- below twenty, and so because of that, they end up getting sort of a windfall from this, and eighteen, I think, out of our twenty-two school districts are at the floor. So when you look, you know, a few, uh, I think a month or so ago, I showed you guys or explained to you guys about our local revenue impact page that we've got on our website, or you can look up what entities got increases and how much those anticipated increases are. A lot of our school districts got more than the county at large. We're talking one point eight million, one point five million.
Right.
So, the corrections, I, I understand what you're trying to say, and, and honestly, I think a replacement might be a hard sell, but I'm not saying you shouldn't try it, um, because of what's happened.
But seniors would pay that too. If a senior, even if they get a homestead exemption, if their house is valued at more, and we did a replacement, they would be paying more for senior services even though they are a senior.
Right, and, and I, again, I'm not gonna speak to what you guys should do on this, but that is also part of what they're trying to correct at the, at the legislative level.
Right.
Is increasing the homestead, so more seniors are, um, are eligible for that. Making, expanding that, expanding the income requirement, expanding the exemption itself, so that, um, so that that impact is less. They're trying to work on the twenty mil floor as well, but, and, and my, my association says, we don't have a value problem in Ohio. We have a tax problem, and that's what they mean by that, and correcting those problems. The percentage, and, and we can, you know, uh, we can work with, um, uh, with Diane at our office about, um, how much more that's gonna cost people.
Yeah, I think I looked at it, and it was roughly, it wasn't, it was roughly like five dollars a month.
Just, yeah, and it, and it, here's the thing.
But you, but you guys got to understand, we got people in the public, they're coming to us daily, literally, and I don't blame them about their, you know, what they're paying properties on.
But when.
But it, but at the same time, a good community is judged by how it takes care of its seniors and its children, so you're blaming. Really, these seniors that own farms, that own houses, eh, someone brought up to me the other day, they're like, we never really own a property. You pay it off, then you gotta pay taxes, then you gotta pay increased levies on taxes. The only time you really own property is when you die and you're in your burial plot, and that's the land you never have to pay taxes on again. That's the only property you ever really own for the rest of the life, is your burial plot. So, I, that's the conception, that's, that's the word that's out there, is.
But remember, this, whatever, whatever you do as far as putting something on the ballot, you are putting it on the ballot. You're not, you're not enacting it. It's the people.
I understand.
I, I recently.
Like WRTA, putting on a ballot, it's not a tax.
You're letting the people vote.
Right.
I understand that, but honestly, this impacts, and again, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get into position of advocacy here. This impacts every single person in this county, because every single person in this county has someone with elderly that has someone that they're struggling to take care of. We got people in, and I, I do have, obviously, I come from the social service. Um, I had a situation where I had a husband that's in.
Until you're in that spot, you don't realize the needs that is there.
Keeping, keeping somebody in the home.
The most vulnerable population.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the most growing population, and guess where the kids are going? Columbus, away. They're not staying here. I'm getting calls from Arizona, what do you have to take care of my mom? Sorry, we have waiting lists.
Right.
Come home and take care of your.
Right, and it's.
Adult.
Right, but even when you're that person who's in, at home, struggling to take care of that person, um, sometimes people, you know, sometimes kids step in when it's almost too late, because we see that. We see that.
Or they have to quit their jobs to come home and take care of their kids.
And, and I, so that's when I say this is something that impacts everybody in this county. Because whether you, I mean, I don't, my parents are gone, but I have lots of friends who are elderly. I have lots of friends who have, who have elderly who are dealing with it. So, it is a little bit different than the RTA thing, but putting it on the ballot is putting it on the ballot. It's not, um, it's not enacting a tax, and I just had this recently come up where somebody said that as a township trustee, I enacted a tax increase. Well, I, they gave me a lot more power than I have, because township trustees cannot raise taxes. I put, I helped put a levy, I voted to put a levy on the ballot so that my township would have twenty-four-seven fire in EMS. And the voter sixty to forty voted for it. So, I think, I think there has to be, and I get perception is different. It's, the perception is you've done that, but the real, that's a matter of educating the public better, because the public needs to know that if you vote to put something on the ballot, that is not enacting a tax.
Giving the people the chance to vote, and what they feel is important and what's needed.
Right, and, you know, I.
We have been very conservative with our budget. Um, we've never had to say, we need more money, because we've looked outside of our budget.
And you're a piece of the pie compared to the rest of the county, the county services, I think that has to be addressed.
Oh, we're at the lowest.
Yep, I know.
I have it here. Our last collection was one point three million, one point two with a children's services at one point three, but they also have a second one at three point three million, so they're getting five million, and we're getting.
Tough decision, yeah. They really put the screws down, so there's an increase in property value.
And there aren't grants out there. You guys are all talking about these infrastructure grants and all these, you know, building grants and.
We did get the one.
There's not service grants.
Besides the one we just researched.
Right, and that was because they had left over ARPA money that they slid over to the Ohio Department of Aging for us to go.
The other thing that's ruined on every county, especially like Trumbull, Mahoney County, because of the population, is splitting the money equally with the, it would be a town, and it's not.
Right.
It's not right. I mean, you know, unfortunately. I go to Mahoney County, it's the same problem.
So my reason really today is for next week's agenda item, do you feel that adding the carryover money to the services would be accepted?
When do we have to make that decision?
Next week, I'm going to have the request to legally advertise that RFP. It would be released the following week.
It doesn't have to be next week that we have to do this.
Yes, for the RFP cycle to fall into place.
This is just.
The RFP, not for the.
This is for the, this is for the.
This is not for the levy, right.
Okay.
I'd like to.
If, if you've got carryover, I would say, yeah, use it.
Okay.
But it's gonna deplete us.
If the, it'll deplete us.
Structure as far as we can get.
If the levy doesn't pass, it would deplete, and the services would be done.
But we can always look at.
And that's for the public to decide.
That is what it is. I mean, that's for the public to decide. Hate to see that happen, more than anything, but there's a lot of people out there that are paycheck to paycheck, and their property taxes went through the roof, or raising a family, and they're. I mean, we are, we are giving seniors. I get it from people all the time. We are giving seniors free rides. We are giving seniors free meals. This is another thing here, the free healthcare or free, um, in-home provider to take care of them. Is there any wiggle room in there anywhere for a fee somewhere minimal? If it's only five dollars a month, or whatever you're saying per thing, with five dollars, a ride, with five dollars for a home healthcare worker to come in, or ten dollars, or twenty dollars a day, be, you know, break the bank, and are there other funding structures that other counties do?
Now you're changing that person from having to pay fifty dollars a year in property tax, five dollars every time they get a caretaker.
No, it's me, everybody paying fifty dollars a year in property tax, the other person that needs the care is paying five dollars a month or a visit or whatever it is.
Which would add up to a lot more than their fifty dollars that they're paying.
But not for the person that doesn't, not for the homeowner that doesn't have an elderly person in their family. And we're trying to attract young blood here too, at the same time for all these jobs and businesses, and as everybody says, the young people are evaluating the cost of living, what the cost is, what fees they're paying. You know, some people won't live in a certain school district because of the property, the, the taxes. They want to live outside of that school district, so people do look at things like that, and if we are trying to attract young people, those are the ones I think that don't, are out of touch with taking care of the seniors somewhat, and if we're moving to a new economy, a new labor force, a new tech-based future, that's just a consideration, is all I'm saying. We have to find the blend there of what, what works. Throwing money on the property owner doesn't always cut it, is all I'm saying, especially when the state, just, some of these people are paying hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars more, um, on their property right now because of one stroke of the state legislature. I just, a- and I agree with you wholeheartedly, and I just think of the person, we've all seen them, that lives alone, that has nobody else around here, that relies on these services, and has a fixed income, I mean. We need something. We need to work with our state legislator in a sense, to get them to lower some things, so we can raise some things on the other end with no net loss, or no net gain out of the pocketbook thing is, is, would be the, the, the best blend. I just, it's, it's hard to not look at that most vulnerable population and say, sorry, you know, it's, it's really difficult.
And we could be there soon to take care of yourself now, later on.
If it's five dollars an owner, and it's sixty dollars a year for a property owner, we're all paying a he- a heck of a lot more than that than the increase that the state just gave us. Oh. I think mine's six or seven hundred dollars a year more. I'd rather pay the sixty dollars, the senior levy, than the six hundred dollars to the state for no reason. All right, in the meantime, we can use the carryover. We have to use it, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now the boring part of the meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, you guys wanna do the fun or the, uh, the fa- the bad stuff?
Fun, huh, huh. Just start, start at the top and work your way down, let's be sure.
We got a drawing, that's what I'm saying. Do you want to do the drawing part?
Sure. The blindfold.
Okay, so the first drawing is for, uh, those that donated money either to Voices or to the pound directly, or on their dog licenses, whatever. Oh, we don't wanna stake, keeping us honest.
What's this for?
This, but there'll be, there's another one up in my office identical.
Gift basket.
Yes. Roy Cunningham.
Thank you, Roy. Roy, listen, this is a beautiful basket. It's my dog had it. What kind of dog do you have? Uh, Jack Russell, Chihuahua mix, thirteen years old, and still has as much energy as when they were puppies. Little thing, but wants to fight big dogs.
Chihuahua, devil dog.
Yes, devil dog, but the Jack Russell very athletic along with them.
Yeah, Jack, Jack Russell.
So it's a chihuahua that can jump on and bite you on the knees and. Yeah, exactly, but it's very good with, as long as you're in the family. If you're not outside of the family, it'll rip your face off.
I have a pit bull.
Oh, boy.
Pit bull lab.
They really will rip your face off. Although they're, they're, they're so nice. They're so nice.
She is the sweetest thing. Now, she doesn't like honest people.
They, they, they look intimidating.
She doesn't. She gets upset. She growls when they walk by my house, so I get a lot of growling going on, but it's because there was an Amish girl that was scared of her, and she never forgot, because she's a dog and they don't forget. And so now, yeah, she lives in the wrong place, not like other people, but, but she's a, she would also, I think she'd take a bullet for me, so.
Oh.
She's my sweetheart. She's a sad old lady, just like me.
Darlene Hancock. All right, thank you so much, guys. This one was people who donated items. All right, quickly get through this. All right, so we'll start with approvals, denials and updates. Um, Hartford is on the agenda, as you know. There are eight requests pending with Attorney Rogers. Um, the only thing I'm gonna touch on on those, because they're, everything is the same except for, uh, the two at the end. The Johnson Township sign and the Kinsman Township sign, uh, I added them back as pending since Commissioner Roy requested it's the attorney to look at them again. I do want to remind you guys that both Johnson and Kinsman received money, and asking Attorney Rogers to look at these requests again does slow down the process for the remaining requests. Hubbard Township ADA rooms were, restrooms were denied. Trustee Hernandez, um, called me this morning and asked if they could submit a generator request in lieu of that request, and I think it was about seventy-four thousand, rather than a hundred and twenty-five, and is that okay?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Roy, all right, and where would you like that on the list?
I'm sorry?
Where would you like that on the list?
Will we go back to where they were in line, or will we be on that?
All right. So basically, because they were one that was being looked at, then I would probably just put them with the next group that goes, all right. All right, last week you authorized me to ask the attorney about utilizing some of the local assistance and tribal consistency fund money for Warren Township's request. I spoke with Attorney Rogers about several things, including this, yesterday. At the first glance, it does appear that those funds cannot be, the, the local assistance and tribal consistency funds are not to be used for grants or for sub awards, and so they can only be utilized for county projects. She's gonna look into this further as well. Um, my question, and also I had another question regarding that, and that is to applying those tribal consistency, I'm sorry, um, local assistance and tribal consistency funds, um, to another project, because it's a county project, the Stillwagon Water Project, which is on the allocated and promised sheet. So we would do partially apply, it's like a hundred and three, that's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar one. So we would do a hundred and three of it would be just allotted from that local assistance and, um, tribal consistency fund, and then the remainder would be regular ARPA fund. So she's gonna check into that for me.
All right, but the amount of, the amount of.
The amount stays the same. It's just, it's.
Two fifty M I Is, I saw.
You don't care as long as you get it from, where you get it from. Yeah, and that's what, and basically, it's just gonna be an accounting thing, just to, to.
Right, I said, at first glance, can we get a second opinion on that?
Yes, that's, well, as I just said, she was looking into it.
Okay.
So, um, do you want me to reach out to Warren Township to see if they have another request? Or do you want me to wait and see what Attorney Rogers says?
Let's wait, let's wait on her first.
I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, I froze the Mesopotamia Township request, and we reached out to them via Sharon Grover to try to get a different request. Um, we received an email probably a week or so ago from Vernon Township about their request. Trustee Emmerich believes that according to the final rule, their request is eligible under lost revenue. However, Attorney Rogers has told us numerous times now that revenue loss funds are to, not to be utilized for sub awards. She and I discussed this again yesterday so that I would understand it, and, um, as follow-up, she cited the most recent frequently asked questions from the federal government on that, and, and actually sent it to me.
Section thirteen point one four of the FAQ states explicitly, "Treasury has determined that there are no sub-awards in this category." So with your permission, I would like to respond to Mr., to the Vernon Township, and I put it on here, and it was sent to all of you as well. I would like to respond to the email with that information. They also, Trustee Emmerich had also asked if, he'd asked if we had approved that, this kind of, this category for any other sub-awards, and we haven't, so I can tell them that. So, is it all right with both of you if I communicate? Commissioner Malloy?
Yep.
Alright, I received a request from Eagle Fire District, added it to the yes list at the end, per the meeting last, last week, last year. Last week, I said last year, duh. I did also request them to fill out an application and send a copy of that to him. And what I've already received is on the commissioner drive. I noted on my email while I was, well, during the meeting, I did receive that from them, so I will add the application. I received, they, they were here, I think they left. I received a request from Best Purpose. They had come to last week's meeting. They had sent that registered or certified mail, and-
It was the afternoon before last.
Right, and so you hadn't, so we got that, we got it scanned and in, it's on the commissioner drive. I also sent them an application in addition to that request, because it did not have an application with it. Do you want this on the maybe sheet?
Maybe sheet would be fine for that.
Alright, okay. We already talked about the Howland Fire Department request that I added it. I did email those on a yes list whose request had not been sent to Attorney Rogers, asking them to wait until she contacts them for more information. I have not addressed the other issue of recipients utilizing leftover awards for other purposes, but I will do that this year, this week. In the packet, you have the updated yes sheet, and then also, you also have that email from Vernon. And then I've updated the bottom line mini spreadsheet. You'll notice that I put one, we have about one point five available. You've also just added a few things, so we're probably close to just about a million now, based on this.
Commissioners, I have an issue that I just was aware of. The roof at the, Bill, our Tomacai maintenance, the roof at the planning commission and the archives, we came across in removing of the roof, the parapet wall that is on Ein Avenue side. They need a change order to hire a structural engineer to go up and look at the crumbling mortar joints that are between the wall and the roof and the building structure, and it's, that is an ARPA fund project. So, they need to get somebody up there to see if it's good, bad, or ugly.
Does it all have consequences?
No, it doesn't. I don't know what the cost is yet, but moving forward, we don't wanna stop the production, but we need to get somebody up there to look at the structure of the parapet wall.
We need to put it on the agenda, right?
If, well, to make the change order, yes, but to stop progress now? Or we just get somebody up there to look at, that's what I'm asking now, I guess, at the meeting?
Yeah, go ahead.
Would you, Commissioners here, permission to move forward with a change order? When we get that money, then we'll put that on the agenda.
Yeah.
Is that alright, Nick?
Yeah, and I just, for information, this is the, like Bill said, the east parapet wall that's above our archives, and a lot of that is the court documents, the prosecutor's documents directly below that. They've had issues with that freezing and leaking into those documents, their document rooms before, so when they pulled back the wall, they took pictures this morning and sent it to us, that are showing some, that our project manager at Strollo said he needs to get a structural engineer in, see if it needs fixed before anything can be completed with it, so it's-
And times are the essence, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, and-
If the sound were good?
If they have it pulled back, that means also the roof is currently exposed. So, if any weather comes while we're waiting, the faster this gets. This needs to be done faster, because if we, the longer we wait, the more chance it's exposed to weather, more chance any kind of temporary cover blows back. There's documents, the building, the structure, all at risk the longer that it waits.
Well, make the plants in your office should be well-watered.
Yeah, yeah.
They're gonna be healthy plants.
Yeah.
Gary Newbrough, Sanitary Engineer, is Mike Lewinsky just, do you want to go over there and take a look at it?
Um, you know what, I, I don't know. I think the email from, from Strollo said that they wanted to see a structural engineer. I don't know what kind of engineer Mike is, and whether he'd be-
Is he a civil engineer, or is he a building official?
Yeah.
I would think he's structural. I don't know, has anybody talked to him?
I could, I could reach him.
I have not seen him first, yeah, if he's inspecting our permits and stuff we have for things, he should have the know-how.
Yeah, to give his opinion on it, instead of-
Mm-hmm. Well, he was CC'd on the emails, and I don't believe he responded.
Oh, okay.
He's CC'd, and I don't, I don't believe he, he responded at all to this, but I can, I mean, mm-mm. No, he has not responded.
I would give him a call immediately, and then, if he doesn't, if he can't do anything, then we need to move on.
If he cannot do it, we need to, we can move forward with Strollo's to get a structural engineer up there.
So many pictures.
Yeah, there's a lot. It's easier on a computer.
Yeah, I can't load him on my phone.
Um, so, to be clear, we're gonna see if, if Mike can look at it, make a decision. And if he cannot, Strollo's can move forward with a structural engineer, so that we can keep that progress moving.
Yes, and you should know that very quickly.
And we will, yeah, and, and we will put together an agenda item to ratify any decisions made.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
So, what are you, what are we hearing on the engineers' garage? Any progress on that?
There is a meeting Thursday with the, in the morning with the two contractors, and DeSalvo couldn't make the early meeting, so his meeting is at two o'clock, same day Thursday.
Two contractors, not three?
Two is in the morning, and DeSalvo's in the afternoon. He said he couldn't make the morning meeting, so-
That's their official interview meeting?
That's the, yes, that's-
Why does that take so long, once I've been-
Getting them all together. DeSalvo at first said he couldn't make it at all.
So they should have a decision by next week?
I'm hoping, yes. And I gotta run this through, Mike's helping me with this project for the roof, since it's a designable thing.
Brian, you have anything in particular? You're just hanging out.
Just wanted to talk with you guys, if you want, um, things that I've mentioned here today.
You gotta ask her. If she got it, and we have it, can we put that on?
Yes. Yes, I'm taking the one off anyway, in whole.
Talking about the study with Warren Township, obviously, times are the essence with that too. Our attorney, Attorney Wilson, was coming up with language for us to put it on the agenda to approve, to enter into it.
It was approved, but there were no fund numbers.
There's no-
It wasn't approved as to where the money was coming. You can't pay it until you have that.
And to enter into an agreement with Warren Township.
But it didn't have-
Yeah.
It didn't have enough specifics to it.
Right.
It may have been, you can't, we can't, we have to process it and get a PO or anything. I believe that Christie did give them the fund numbers after, but-
We're just waiting on that language from our attorney to put that on. He put, I told Lisa, if he gets it even in the afternoon to put it on, immediately.
Yeah, please. Yeah, they're, they're ready to go. I told Kate last week, let's get rolling on this, and-
Well, can't do it if you don't have the right language.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything, like a motion adjourned? Second?
Mr. Commissioner Malloy?
Yes.
Yes.